There are so many studies that show that. What was that? Capsule of the hospital. Can you read any of the studies on this? There are Harvard University series. It's been reduced by. Reduces by. And so how much is that? The vision I've been looking into. But there's this already study. And there are studies that pop up that don't talk in very study to study. It is clear.
I'm not. What do you do? I don't know. Well, I'm. I'm going to. Yeah. Why? You want one of the cards out for the next time?
Oh, my. He's on that. Oh, my.
Yeah, will you feel better?
This can be ten minutes long, man. You make sure you met Justin before, Justin truly.
These should help us, I think.
Yeah. I probably wrote a late. You don't want to stay?
I've bought it.
Yeah, you do have. Surely they're one of those jumbos.
Oh.
Those are purpose.
Okay. You only need twelve? We got your twenty-four.
Good luck, I use it well. Thank you. Do this? This is chat.
All of them. Yeah, like nine.
That's more. Hey. I know I need to. I know, right? I need something to keep my pens in. Sorry, Carrie. Sure we get out of here.
I think it's way too much for our little. Probably. Yeah, probably. I do this.
Yeah? Good, thank you.
That's why they shouldn't do this. They could just wait two years. Then it's amazing that it'll spill. And have a song like.
So you're not a fish.
If they. No. Yeah, we. There's no guys. No, it's.
Oh, there's something about.
If you keep the three days.
I'm looking at all.
Just wait for a shake.
I'm telling you. I'm. I'm there. I know, I understand. I'm looking at. And that's not what I. Just tell you.
Well, I know. And I really want to. Need that. We can't have someone who's already has. No, no, no. It's gonna be the same. Hello, how are you? Just sit with you right here. I made you something. My mom made it. I love you. You're welcome. We. We talk. Hi. How are you? How's it going?
I do. Annual staffing for virtually three schools, right? Pretty much. Wow, look at that. I know. Because the flexibility in the spread will allow. Discreet. Because. Right now, apparently. Or technically, you know, if somebody's. In terms of. When we're combining teams like seven, eight, three, four.
I also with us and talk.
And then their. You have little things assorted at.
Yes.
Like if they're running a fire or, you know, one, two. You now have five other grades of the grade gap. So they can't use that space in the catch. But I always work on kids and team. You know, orchestra, choir, A and B. And this takes in.
No.
Like rotation out there, physical education and back.
You know. We don't have.
Well, you're looking because you're completely.
That's the thing. No, like I was.
They have a group. So like Patriots on.
Yeah.
You see. Seven grades. So it's straight. So it's a straight. So one would be going.
Alexander. Alex. One.
Six, seven, eight grades.
Do I stay with that?
They hop around.
Yeah?
It's a final. It's a final. Smaller grades, they have one home room. Yeah. How long does. So in the seventh, eighth grade model. They move to the classroom. They have a home. They have an advisory. They'll move between.
You don't have.
Our six.
Diana or my brother. Love the care.
Right now, when they go in there and they're on the K3s, they hop around.
I had a party game. She was like. How about. Oh, I see her all the time. Either Haldeman or it's.
I brought my wife.
Tony is actually was. And then he became assistant principal.
Yeah, my kids are calling.
Tony, I see, was the guy. I see Tony. We went with these teachers, these retired teachers. And they get together once a month. They used to, every Friday. But, um. We did great. Well, roots in the valley. We now go to the valley once a month. Lunch. And you can. Over three years. Some of the districts. Let's be a friend time now. You had houses and you had thirty kids.
Something level worse than okay.
No, not in the upper. Not in some. I own. I had three kids in science.
Yeah, by the time I get to college, they ancient. Smoke. Smoke. I just think. My team. Some college. Have done down the course. I was. And then I transferred to Cal Poly Center. When I got to Cal Poly Center. It was tape off compared to what. The great thing about. I told them, they see two years and I'm sending them. Because I had too many trends. You got that. Before your college, when it's freshman. The first time away from parents and they just. They just blew out the first two years partying and preparing. For the people who were coming in as third year candidates. They were working their butts off. By the time they got there, they were. Before I got there, my system. And the two-year transfers were actually the better students.
Yeah, it's all my logic.
That's another.
Plus they were perfect. Yeah. They may have. Working hard to get there.
They're all going to be big kids. Six, seven, eight.
I'm gonna tell you a story. I'm gonna sit down and have our. Mr. Barber. The first country court ever did the second. Two thousand and five. Me and my. Four. And, uh. Felt in the back. Felt in the back. We're. Corner bar. I hope we gotta walk away. Cause I'm done. I'm off. I'm struck. It's a month. My superintendent, he looked at me and pulled out the dikes. Said, give me a pair, give me a pair. And we started kind of. And corner bar, he was trying to laugh there. Barber. I paired up. And he, Barber, superintendent, started rebar. And we get down and go. We're ready. That's my first experience. So up until the point of the poor, it was kind of all messed up. But today, the poor, their mics, dogs, smokes and cigars. Me, superintendent, and with VSA, I'm trying to rebar. You need that. You know, my fire's moving all. Weird. Um, I didn't think about. Fire. Six, seven. Should be using twenty-five thousand square foot deck. Fourth level. Yeah. In San Diego. So. The concrete. Winkle. Quarter. And one. They drag the. Drag the.
I know that Alton was.
This is. And the finishers drug up. Not only coal, you know, it's the house.
On here we can. Now. I know. It's work. All of us.
He's here. He's like.
And I taught in the high school. The syllabus was different. I understand. Not absolutely. We are. And.
Sure that I'm definitely. Interleased when you perforate the deck. Because the deck was exposed. Actually, it was. We're pouring. So. Like he said.
Yes.
It was all backed up. The internet.
Tell us to come and sit with us.
Corny. That's corn. Six guys. Ten. Corny, ten, ten, three. I don't say.
But we're not in the head.
Go down, look down, neat.
We're not.
They look like. And. Hands. Live in the middle.
You wanna count?
I inherited a job like that. My first job was PM. People were building up a hospital. The superintendent hands me all the shit and tickets from the.
Mm-hmm. It is about very preference. We are at least.
What they were doing when. Met that, it's supposed to afford for coverage. You trust the coverage. When they had the whole groups. Right? With all that weight. You know, they kept pouring, pouring, so everything off. You know.
To get better. I had a great. I wanted to do that. To get better.
They had, of course. Hadn't taken our decks. Just span. That's what they created a bigger. Not only that. The RDEX wasn't compatible with the weather. It got. They started. So. All possible. And no one. The subcontractor's argument was, we had a, we had a schedule for eighteen finishers. Three plus. Around a month. And then your superintendent changed it.
I don't see any intention to try to fix it.
So we scrambled. Got a bloody rate. And he changed it. So I can only get most of the guys. Everybody told his dog. Cause they could work in a nice.
Yeah, very. We owe the. Getting so much anger in there. Hey, how are you? Join us. I'm sitting in the. Hi. Hi, Martin. How are you? So nice. Love your. Always gorgeous. I'm just gonna come take a quick. How are you? Hello. How are you? Are you sitting? Fine, how are you? Thank you for sitting next to me.
Well, of course, you speak the language. So. Really.
I will not do anything.
Uh. And the bad thing about. I think. It's not funny about. It's brand. Fourth. Front page of. You'll hear. Kind of. All the. Four. Six years. And. He was. People. The.
The.
All the. Really. They've done a good job. And they were.
Although. We've been surprised. It was only part of.
Was you only? Is that? He's so. It's just. Having. But it was happening. If. Somebody. I'm treating.
I was. Same. I can't. I'm like. I'm like. Allah. And. So I find. About.
Greens. Whatever.
Yeah.
We're.
We're like. I'm. I'm. I was. Yeah.
You're still the top. Right. I have the elevator. I'm.
No, no. Yeah. I'm.
Okay. Well.
You know. Alibi.
Well, the back.
I said, take and choose my battles. That's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But there's so much aggregate. First time taking. So.
We had a course session.
Right now. We tell you.
Yeah.
That's why. Yeah. I am so. I'm not. Rick. So. You're gonna. I don't know. I mean.
Boring. The boring machine. Everything will be done with special machines. It's a special.
Are they all scheduled? I don't. So they should be coming.
Morning, Tommy. They always get out first.
Another good one. Camera. So. I have. Right. How it. Get. To. It's tough. There's. So. Remember. Yeah. Same time.
That was good. Why? I thought even like. The guy. Sometimes. I think. Right. Yeah. I was. Y'all.
I guess. Yeah.
It doesn't. Yeah.
You're just only about.
I was seeing.
You're like. Sorry.
I was looking. No, not at all.
There was. One full set. And yes.
I took out. I am. No, I don't.
Oh.
I'm. I. I'm. I'm. This morning. I. I know. Yeah. But. But the thing for. I. Yeah. Say I said.
They didn't.
I'm trying to. I'm gonna text. By yourself. I. Debbie.
They didn't call. We said. Before you. You want. So. All for business.
Okay.
I'm. Are you? I did. Yes. I do. So. Thank you. They asked you. Where are you? I'm sorry. I don't want to. That's why I don't. At the end. We sit on the end. Is there an S? Yeah. I don't mind. Where do you want to? Um. Here. You sit on the. Are you sure? Yeah. I'm trying to find out. Yeah, you. Yeah. I was like. Doing. Can I? Do you think I should? I should.
Yeah.
You are. Hi, how are you? How are you? See, I'm. Or. Is that? Okay. Yeah. How are you?
Right. Yes. I know.
Every. Alright, I'll go. I thought. Thank you.
Anybody have? Comment? Make your. Town. Maybe.
I was. I. I'm. I don't know. I don't know. She's. My. I know. I know. I've never.
I didn't wear. All the time.
I don't think I can. I'm. Oh, yeah. Probably. Very close.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Okay, welcome, everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Knock on wood. And. Oh, is that figurative, right? Right. And I would like to call up. PTA Council President Rose Kaiserman to do the pledge for us. Since you always call on other people. You know it, Rose. You know it by now. You know it by now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, sound people, this mic is out. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move the approval of this agenda.
Moved and seconded by Ms. Hacker. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Goldson, you have microphone issues, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Apparently, I guess it's an every-other today. On Fridays, it's every-other mic. Dr. Bregge, do we have a report of closed session action? I say that like I don't really know, right?
There is no, there was no action in closed session.
Thank you. I have two comment cards for public comment. Claire Dardasty. And it seems I have some more floating up here.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, the board. Good morning, the parents. Kind of forgot, I didn't really prepare well. But, so I apologize if I can't express myself clear enough. I'm here to express how much concern we have that about the reconfiguration for our district and our school. We love our children. We know you are, you do, too. And we have, we have our fish to fry, and we trust you guys that you can do the best job for us. But we have a doubt. We have lots of doubt, and we hope you guys can help us. This is not, we're not expecting the situation like this. And I, I remember recall the last meeting, the Future Focus Group, that our superintendent, Mr. Dr. Bregge, said, "You will bring the parents on board or a group of people that can help you to bring out more community opinion." But I haven't seen it. Maybe I have missed it. But I think we need this, and we, we hope you can bring the community together again and give us a better opinion, a better plan for this reconfiguration. And we don't like surprise. We love to be noticed ahead, and we can well prepare. We love our public school. We support public school. And we have lots and lots of parents still believe in public school. We want to be here, and that's why we're here. So we hope you can help. And we're looking forward to see your plan and, and hope all the board can be helping us to verify all the details, what's the best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Hi, I'd like to introduce myself as a third-generation resident and alum. Or, I guess I'm second generation. My kids will be, they're going through the school, so they're the third generation. I'm here not because this will negatively impact my children specifically, but because I care about the community. And I think that there are some inevitables that we're all fighting on, and it's leaving us very polarized in our community at a time where we need to be more unified. I'm also a therapist. I'm looking at, you know, everybody's feelings and everybody's, you know, skin in the game, and how can we, it's not so much a matter of what we're gonna do, but how we're gonna get there, is what I want to speak about. So I think the inevitables are, that Elrodeo closes for construction. I think that although people might not feel good about it, they might feel betrayed that they didn't have proper notification or whatever it is, it is where we're at right now, and I think sa- safety of our kids is paramount. So I think all parents in the community, all families would rally around that, whether you're directly impacted as an Elrodeo family or one of the other families, that the school should be closed, that children and teachers shouldn't be exposed to emissions like that. So if it's closed, that means we have about two to three years for construction, and how can we do that most thoughtfully? I also think that it's no longer a matter of a K-8 model or a middle school. I think with the construction of Elrodeo, it seems inevitable that we're moving towards a middle school model. I personally am a fan of the K-8 model, but I also know when it's time to stop throwing good money after bad. And I think that what's important is building a thoughtful program, a thoughtful internal and external structure, so that includes the campus and the programs, and to take the time to do that instead of fighting within the community. I also think that there's no reason to spring that on everybody now and make them feel like they're being pushed off a cliff. I think there's a way to maintain the K-8 model during construction, so there's minimal collateral damage. The BV students, the K-5 students don't have to move. They can stay put at their school. And you survey the Elrodeo families to find out what their preference is between the other, among the other three schools, and, and why. What are the reasons? And to do it anonymously, so they can feel free to really comfortably inform the board. And then, the other inevitable is teacher cuts. So to sit there and actually look at the numbers of how many teachers we need to cut, what the budget is, and figure out what the proper absorption is for the Elrodeo students so that they feel heard, they feel like they have a voice. Thank you for letting me speak.
You can finish your thought.
Thank you. Okay. So if you were, if you were to do this, I think that would really help alleviate so many bad feelings that are happening among the Elrodeo families who feel disenfranchised and betrayed, that they could have a voice, and that you guys would be listening, and that the community, we come together to absorb them as thoughtfully as possible. And the rest of the schools, the rest of the three elementary schools aren't gonna feel like, "I have a fourth grader who's now gonna go to Hawthorne for fifth grade, who will then go to BV for sixth grade, and Elrodeo for seventh or eighth grade," because that seems absurd to ask that of our families. Whereas if you keep the K-8 model in place now, then the Elrodeo families have a chance to settle into a new school for the next two to three years of construction, and then everybody goes to middle school who's age-appropriate when Elrodeo is finally ready. So there's less movement, and there's time to absorb what's happening. Elrodeo can feel, the families can feel cared for and heard. The district, or you guys, are not fighting all of us, and you guys are really doing what you need to do, which is coming up with a thoughtful program for us moving forward, since you are dismantling an age-old K-8 program. So I think that's where your energy should be, but you have to do it in a thoughtful way, where you're not polarizing the community, having people scrambling. There's enough wealth in the community where people can send their kids to private school, move out. I mean, it's a big shakedown. There's a lot of risk there, and we already have a diminished student body. We have very upset families, and I think it's important for families to feel cared about, and for people to, I think it's an opportunity to unify the families and the community rather than polarize them. And it really is not a matter of what we do, but how we do it.
Thank you. Jenna Franco?
Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I'm a graduate of Beverly. I left Horseman for middle school because our middle schools had issues 30 years ago, and it's a problem that hasn't been fixed. And even though my daughter successfully went through middle school during construction, construction was a disaster, having kids at Horseman. So I think closing Elrodeo during construction is a no-brainer. You save time, you save money, and if you think parents are angry now, just wait till construction starts and all the problems start. And the truth is, people that can afford to go to private school never went to private school when we were growing up. But now, people have chosen to pull their kids. We have to change something. And I think if you don't jump in and you don't do the middle school now, when will there ever be a right time? There's always gonna be extra planning, extra time, extra issues, but now's the time. You have the time, I believe, if putting a concentrated team together, I believe that you have the time now, starting now, figure out what the plan is. Things that don't work, you can tweak. A teacher, a good teacher can teach under a tree. You don't need a fancy building. And the fancy building, you know, is really, that can be a bonus later, but our, our kids need more. And even though I love our teachers at Horseman, our middle school teachers, I would love to get, you know, some different teachers throughout the districts and change. My daughter had the same teacher over and over again, and small classes that, some are great, but it'll be nice to have a different environment and to introduce the kids younger together, I think. Even though I, I have liked the K-8 for keeping the kids young, I think there's so much more value education-wise, and the truth is, we're here for education. If our kids aren't prepared for high school, if they aren't prepared for college, then really, school, what's school for? I mean, the socialization is important, the safety is important, but the most important thing is education. So I appreciate that you guys are throwing this in and doing it, and I know a lot of time and effort has gone in this. I know people are really scared, and it's uncomfortable to change, and it's inconvenient that your kid might not be able to walk to school. It's gonna happen to all of us, but it's a unified school district. And if the middle, if we're running four middle schools, not all equally, that's not fair to our kids. No one wants anything to happen to them, but this is a big picture. This is about educating our kids, creating a legacy, and moving it so it's better for our high schoolers, better when they graduate to have more successful lives. And I went to school with Allison, and there, there are a lot of things that, you know, I agree, but we, we just have to make the change at some point, and no one's ever gonna be ready, but I, I believe that we have to do it now. And that construction piece, to me, is the most important, to get the kids out while you're doing construction for time, money, safety, and everything. And I fully support doing a middle school, and doing it yesterday. So, thank you.
Thank you. I see Pam coming down. Who's the next contestant on The Price is Right? Contestants. Jackie Kruger, and then Ellen Carmona.
Hello, everybody. And I did not come prepared. I actually didn't realize that this meeting was happening until late last night, so I just have a couple of questions, really, that I would like answers to. I keep on going back and forth personally on the issues. I see the benefits of pooling resources, and I see the benefits of having more neighborhood schools where all of our kids are together in different locations. I see the benefits of both, and I see the struggle that we are in as a community. But my, my biggest question is, something that somebody else had brought up to me, is in, at Beverly Vista, if we have this as, as our middle school, and we have currently 700 little kids in there, how is it going to be for 900 now big kids to be there? Where is there gonna be any place to get away from each other if they need to? How are we really going to give them more resources when we're now in a very, much tighter situation? And I, I want that question answered to really understand the benefits for our middle school students. And you all, most of you know me, so I have, I'm gonna have a divided family when this happens. I have currently a, a third grader, a fourth grader, and a sixth grader, so next year I'll have one middle schooler and two on the brink of going to the middle school, but still in elementary. So they'd have to move twice, back and forth. So it's, it's slightly a complication, which I'm, I'm willing and happy to, to, you know, have my family move forward on if it's a net benefit. But everything that I've heard about is a net benefit for possibly middle school? What is the benefit for our elementary school students? I want to know that answer. And is there going to be a reduction in class sizes when we do this? Are we gonna go back to the 20-to-1 model that we wanted a long time ago? Is there room for that? And this middle school that we're making Beverly Vista, is that our permanent middle school, or is this our temporary middle school? Are we thinking of somehow finding a larger campus to house all of our students in? And I also'd like to know about the teachers and the administrators. What is, who is going where? And will we, as parents, know about that? Who are the teachers? Because we all love our teachers in our schools, and will we get input on knowing if our third grade class or our fourth grade teachers are gonna stay in the fourth grade, or are they gonna be moved all around, and everybody's gonna have to relearn a brand-new curriculum and be moved in different ways? And are we going to be actually keeping the teachers that are excellent? Or are we gonna be making this decision on some other, some other way? Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
Hi, I was unprepared to speak also. I didn't know this was one of those speaking situations. But I guess the question is, has anybody considered the idea of taking Elrodeo offline for construction, as it seems like there's no option? Disseminating the children in K-8 while the construction is happening? And during that time, everybody's always talking about Hawthorne. What will happen with Hawthorne? It has to come offline for construction at some point. What are we gonna do with it? Thinking about repurposing Hawthorne as the middle school, taking the year and a half to two years that Elrodeo is being built up, while we plan to then take Hawthorne offline the minute Elrodeo's finished, and turn that into a middle school. Yes, this will maintain K-8 for several more years. However, the district will have a plan going forward for a dedicated middle school that can be completely planned, built, well-thought-out, and given to the public in a way that gives them an enormous amount of preparation and time to see the future, more than six years or one year down the road. Also, doing this right now with the high school, with Elrodeo coming offline, taking all of the sixth graders, all the 11-to-13-year-olds in the district, putting them in a holding pen, basically, for whatever the plans are, to make that a more efficient middle school down the road, seems very combustible. It doesn't seem like a good idea to me. If you look at other middle schools, other public middle schools in the area, they're bigger. They have more stuff. Yes, I get it. We'll get an extra AP English class or Honors English. We'll get maybe a debate club. All fine, but it doesn't take away the stress of these kids being like, in my opinion, non-free-range chickens. That age group is too volatile to be all together like that in an elementary school physical setting. And I just think that while we take care of one change at a time, you can make cuts, maintaining K-8 while Elrodeo is under construction. You've got a whole staff that's not working at that point. There are your economies. But don't make the maximum amount of impact for the maximum amount of kids. You're impacting Elrodeo disseminating them, but you're not taking all the kids from every single school and putting them somewhere else. Sorry. That's all I wanted to say. Please consider the Hawthorne as a middle school in the future possibility. Thank you.
I'm looking over at Pam. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and for your attendance today. All right, I need a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, Mr. Margot.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hacker. Thank you, Mr. Spitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Board policies. Ms. Kraus, I don't have the board policy in front of me. Do you have a copy? Just so I can just... Okay. Just for my colleagues, I'll just repeat that this is a board policy, Board Bylaw 9320, which discusses our regular meeting time and place, and it changes it from 7:00 in the Salter Theater to 5:00 in the Churney Lecture Hall. We could, if we choose to waive the first reading and adopt this, we can do that today.
I move to waive the first reading, and I move approval of the modification of the bylaw.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you for correcting that. Mr. Spitz, I think you brought that to our attention, right? I need an, I need an outbox here. Mental note. Mental note. Okay. It's public hearing time. Okay. The public hearing and approval of salary and health and welfare increases for BHEA, CTA, BHEA OTBS, BHEA IA, CSEA, Confidential Management, and Unrepresented Employee Groups for fiscal year 2018 through 19, 2019 through 20, and 2020 through 21 is now open at...
It's 11:08.
11:08. Thank you. Per, oh, yes, I did. Per AB 1200, we are required to provide time for public comment on the AB 1200 and the tentative agreements with the BHEA, CTA, BHEA OTBS, BHEA IA, CSEA, Confidential Management, and Unrepresented Employee Groups. We now invite members of the audience to address the Board of Education on the proposed agreements. For those who have questions, we're talking about the contracts, the employee contracts. Anybody? Would you like to come make a comment about the proposed agreements? Uh, no, you gotta step up.
Um, just a question, and I am admittedly not well-versed in the mechanics of what's going on here with the increases in the contract negotiations. However, I did hear from someone who is a bit more knowledgeable that by, that we knew that what would be affordable for various potential scenarios going forward was about a 2% increase for teachers and what was agreed upon, and correct me when I'm wrong, not if, but when, but what was agreed upon was about a 5% increase for teachers, which had the domino effect of creating a scenario where the only, the only possible way to go forward in reconfiguration and remain solvent is to pare down to a dedicated middle school at Beverly Vista as quickly as possible. I don't, and again, not if I'm wrong, when I'm wrong, but this is something that I heard that by agreeing to the salaries the way they are, it created a nonstarter for any option other than going to just...
Dr. Bregge, you want to take that one?
Sure. So I just want everyone to think back from the last 14, 15 months. You know, this is reconfiguration and looking at possible consolidation has been in discussion for a long time, before even teacher negotiation. So I want you to be assured that this is something that we've been talking about for a long time and certainly not just recently with the, with the teacher contract.
Any other comments? The Board of Education has heard your comments and concerns and we thank you very much for your input. That's the first time in my seven years that there actually has been a comment or concern on public hearing, so thank you for making that statement reality. The public hearing is now closed at 11:11. Thank you. I will now entertain, we're going to move on to, I'd like to move on to ratification of the contracts before we go to the LACO review. I think that would make the most sense. So, can I make a mo, can somebody make a motion for items 11A through D? 11A. I don't know, Ms. Hacker thinks we should not group these.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain motions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve tentative agreement with, by, I think this is miswritten here. Certified, with the certified unit. I doesn't, sorry, it's not working. Do you want to do it? Howard, my mic is not working.
No, that's okay. All right.
So I don't think you can hear me. So Howard, can you do it?
Yeah. Okay. I'll move to approve the ratification and approval of salary and health and welfare increases for BHEA, CTA. So we can do them one at a time?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for O. Moving along.
I'll move to approve salary and health and welfare increases for BHEA OTBS.
I will second.
Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero.
I'll move to approve the salary and health and welfare increases for BHEA IA.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for zero. And finally?
I'll move to approve the salary and health and welfare increases for CSEA.
Second, Mr. Spitz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Contracts are ratified.
Well, no, we have one more. I think this is all together.
Not on this one, we don't.
Of Confidential Management and Unrepresented Employee Groups as well.
Hold on a second. Ms. Kraus, how are?
What do you have on?
My, my...
I'm looking online. What are we up there?
Mr. Goldstein is looking online, but the copy I have, the agenda, the... Excuse me, I'm late for AP stats. I'll be back.
No, you're reading off here. We're reading these.
Oh, okay. All right. All right.
So I think that's it.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Kraus, did I miss anything? Because we're, there's a little discrepancy up here between what was listed in item, in item 10A and then, which you mentioned, other contracts. We'll bring it back next, we'll bring it back next week. Bring it, hey, it's Ms. Kraus' group. Stats. Bring it back.
We have IAs.
Okay. So we're going to go back to item 10B.
Yeah, we're good.
LACO review of 2017 un18 audited actuals. Is that, who's presenting that? Is that just a presentation of the actuals? Review. Okay. Which I don't have in front of me. I apologize. Is anybody...
Do you want the legal letter?
Yeah, is that what we, do you have it?
I have a system.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Spitz, Dr. Bregge just handed it to me. It's okay. Yeah. The one day I don't bring my computer. Okay. This is just the LACO letter of approval for the AB 1200. Do people want to hear me drone on? I'd be happy to, in my best Storytime voice. Under Assembly Bill AB 1200, Chapter 12, 13, Statutes 192, AB 2756, Chapters 5, 2, Statutes 2004, and Government Code, Section 3, 5, 4, 7.5, the Los Angeles County Superintendent of Schools has reviewed the Beverly Hills Unified School District's public disclosure of proposed collective bargaining agreement concerning settlements with the BHEA, CTA, the BHEA, IA, BHEA OTBS, California School Employees Association, and Confidential Management and Nonrepresenting Bargaining Units. The tentative agreements settle salary negotiations for the years 2018 through 2021 and are scheduled for governing board approval on October 26, 2018, which we just did, so this is now passed. The agreements between the district and bargaining units provides for salary schedule increase of 4.72% retroactive to July 2018. The agreement also provides increase in 2019, '20 salary schedule of 4.82, a one-time 2019, '20 off-schedule payment of .54% and an increase in the 2021 salary schedule of 4.92. In addition, the employer paid health and welfare benefits cap is increased in the first year by 1,250 and the following years by 500 each year. With all the costs of the settlement incorporated, the district projects reserves of 16.03% for 2018, 10.72 for 2019, and 3.74 for 2020. So that's, that's the approval. And it's, I'm not going to go on. Is this posted, this letter, on the website? Posted on, fabulous. Posted. Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? Nope? Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Okay. Moving on to the reason this meeting was originally scheduled, planning and facilities. Let's have it, Don Blake and staff.
Can you all hear me? I was just asking Mr. Margot if we should go to reconfiguration and pull that ahead of our agenda, but he's explained that he put a time limit on this presentation, so it should be very short. So if you will just, we'll just take...
Well, not a time limit, but...
Not very sure, but...
Noted. We've shortened, we've shortened the presentation.
Noted.
And I think some of this information is important and helpful to everyone here, so...
Members of the board, Dr. Bregge and staff, we appreciate the opportunity to bring to you the final GMP for the Beverly Hills B1, B2 Modernization and Seismic Upgrade Project. The intent of this presentation is to give just kind of a little bit of background on how we got here today and share with you what's represented in front of you on the table of the last round of bidding of this particular construction project. We've reviewed it before, so I'm going to go a little quickly, but the new B1, B2 project will contain 10 classrooms, fully multimedia classrooms, as well as a flexible learning corridor along the second floor, full media center and library, new administration center, and this facility will be fully outfitted with security access control systems and security cameras for a safe learning environment. Our timeline. Our DSA approval process on this particular project was three years and two months. We've finally received final approval of the REV1 DSA drawings on August 17, 2018, which allowed us to complete the final round of trade bidding on the project. As you recall, we're utilizing a lease-leaseback delivery method on this project. Just to kind of a little recap, the advantages to the school district allow for an integrated or IPD project delivery. It allows early involvement of the contractor during the design and approval phase to get familiar with the project and, most importantly, the establishment of a GMP. The lease-leaseback selection process, just to remind us, we did a RFQ back in fall of 2017. The primary categories that were involved in selecting that lease-leaseback contractor, which happens to be Pro West, and we have two representatives here in the audience today from Pro West, were their capacity, experience, staffing plan, and most of all, their strategic plan to carry out this complex project. During the winter, we were wrapping up our pre-construction phase, coordination with the architect, constructibility reviews of the design documents, investigation and due diligence of the property and existing structures, and developing the trade, individual trade bid packages for competitive bidding. Back in May, we brought to you what we call the Phase 3 1A PGMP. The numbers were a little bit confusing, but just to clear it up, this was, this is bidding round one of three. This was the initial 10 trades that we competitively bid to get the work moving while we waited for that final DSA stamp on the final revision to the plans. We advertised 10 trade packages, Pro West leading the way in that effort, 1,759 individual invites issued, 19, over 1,900 follow-up phone calls. We received 21 bids, of an average of 2.1. We had a discussion with the board and the facilities subcommittee and we decided to pull out three trades out of that award, framing, concrete, and survey due to low bidder turnout, and we would rebid those in a second round. That PGMP was approved back in May. That was number one. In July, we brought to you the rebidding efforts of the concrete, framing, and survey work. During that effort, Pro West advertised in five periodicals and public newspapers, sent out 623 individual invites, made nearly 1,000 phone calls, and those regrouped efforts resulted in 14 bids on those three trades, which is 4.6 per trade average. Anything over three, I give them an A. That PGMP for that particular work was approved by the board in July. So what you have in front of you on the table and up on the screen is the efforts for the third and final round of bidding to create 1, 2, and 3 bidding efforts as the final GMP for the B1, B2 seismic upgrade and modernization project. There was 33 packages. The remaining 33 packages were advertised, again, published in five periodicals and newspapers. Over 4,000 invites sent to bid, over 3,000 follow-up phone calls made, and those efforts resulted in 135 individual bids, which you have in the white binders in front of you. The results of that effort were 4.09 bids per trade. In this market, we feel that was an excellent turnout, especially with the challenging project, as we all know it is, to result in a final number of, for the final PGMP of $38,789,668. What you have in front of you is what was referred to as Amendment 2. Amendment 2 would wrap the final third PGMP bidding effort into the initial contract to create the overall GMP for the project. Any questions? Or I think the next agenda item kind of rolls right into the same subject matter.
Mr. Palmer, just before I open up the floor, can you just tell everybody that's been sitting here patiently what all this is up here?
Truthful, our department has the fold-up table and I think Dr. Bregge's department has the, has the boards for you. I don't want to steal their thunder.
No, 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 your department.
Okay. Our, to our department. The three white binders represent the 135 bids that were received during the bidding efforts. The salmon-colored seven volumes represent the bidding documents, less the plans. We didn't haul all the plans in here. That's a little massive. That's the bid scopes of work, the bid forms, the technical specifications, the soils reports that have been done on this property, the DTSC analysis that have been done on this property, the seismic reviews that have been done on this property, and the addendums that were issued during the bidding process to mention the major items. So each individual that bid this project had to review all seven binders, be familiar with that information, as well as the actual blueprints, and walk the job and be familiar with the existing conditions.
And I could just say, before we open it up here for discussion and vote, is that in my seven years here with all the construction that has gone on, we've never had anything this detailed and this exhaustive. So I appreciate the work that went into acquiring all of this.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion on item B and then we can open it up for discussion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment number two to the Construction Services Agreement with Pro West PCM, DBA Pro West Constructors for Beverly Hills High School Buildings B1 and B2 Modernization Project.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hacker. Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Okay, discussion.
Did you want to go into...
Did you want to add anything else before we...
No, I think I'm good. If, I know there was an early question that may be answered already about the specifics of the bid package number three. I can... I can go through the individual scopes of work, but I think they're listed in the rationale.
I had to ask that question earlier, but I think you've answered it. You're right. Thank you.
Mr. Spitz?
Well, I think even though you look at these kinds of records that have to be studied and understood, nobody can really appreciate the difficulties that have been encountered and have to be overcome in these buildings that we're talking about. You would almost have to tour the buildings to understand the scope and the difficulty of fixing those buildings. Just to say one word about it. In a way, the entire foundations of those buildings had to be rebuilt underneath them. It's almost inconceivable to be able to do that. So I too want to express my appreciation to the crew that have been responsible for accomplishing this. It's really an amazing job. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I ditto everything Mr. Spitz says. And thank you, Jeff, for the comprehensive tour that you gave us on, what was it, Monday? And the work is so complex and so detailed. So just hats off to all of you. And thank you for sticking around and doing this for us.
Mr. Goldstein?
Right. Thank you. So I want to highlight a few things. Guaranteed maximum price. This is the most that we will pay for any project using this methodology. So, and I'm looking out in the audience and I don't see anyone. I see Jenna there, but anyone from the Horace Mann Facilities Committee that we started in 2006. The district got Christensen in 2008. They used a design-bid-build methodology. And essentially what drove construction was the architects kept on drawing. They kept on drawing really nice pictures on things this district couldn't afford. They're drawing probably a billion dollars' worth of construction when, at that time, maybe we would have been able to get 500 million to get it done 10 years ago. As we continued on and Horace Mann went into production. And interestingly enough, Pro West, and Jeff Rising's here. He's, his company built Horace Mann. And probably without their help, Horace Mann doesn't get built because of our program management team at that time. The construction people got that project done. But what we learned from the Horace Mann project is if you allow your architects to over-design and you allow them to cost it out, you're going to have what we call change orders. And if you came to the board over the years of Horace Mann from 2014 through just recently, about 2017 before Don Blake and his team got here, a third of our agenda was change orders. And we'd sit here and approve change order after change order after change order. That not only took time, because that was for a lack of planning on the construction management end, but it also cost this district money. Fortunately, Don Blake, finishing up the project, we were able to come fairly close to what our April 2014 budget on that project was, including when he put in SSMP. This methodology allows us to go bid this. And we spend a lot of time, money, and effort, and I don't say we, those gentlemen there that are doing our construction management now, to save us on the back end. So when the next board gets here and they have to sit here, they're not going to be approving change orders. That's all built into the price. If there's additional costs, that's going to come off of the contractor. So the contractor's now motivated to make sure that this gets bid. That contractor's also sitting right there for the high school, Pro West. So they're highly motivated to make sure it comes in on time and on budget. It wasn't their doing. It was the way it was construction managed that we got all those change orders. So I want to make that clear, because people have asked, well, the same people that did Horace Mann, and you did it that way, is doing this project. The methodology of how it was bid and the time upfront is going to save this district's time and money. And we're going to get these projects done. The next board and the board after that is going to get these projects done when we say that they're going to be done for what we say it's going to cost. And I think that's the most important thing that we're doing here today.
Okay. Anything else? Dr. Bregge, do you have anything to add on this? Okay. Thank you. Obviously, Jeff, Don, staff, and Pro West on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for bringing this to us back then. It's not, we have a motion on the floor. And watching this process, serving on the subcommittee, and watching this process evolve has been fascinating. It seems, you think you understand, going through six years of construction in the district, how things work. But what we really wound up understanding is how things don't work. And now I think we understand how things should work. And I look forward to this process unfolding and implementing this in the future. Marnie, I see your hand. I have a motion on the floor. I have to take the vote. Then I'll allow for public comment if you want to fill a card out. I will, all right. Yeah. This project is Measure E funds.
We have not sold any-
BH bonds yet.
BH bonds. So there's no- We haven't sold, so you don't have any money.
It's just about to start shortly. We're just waiting for final approvals from DSA on Buildings B3 and B4, because those are under BH. But this is Measure E. Okay. Since we're all still fans of this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. This is kind of historic in a way. I know it doesn't seem that way, but it is for us and for this district moving forward. We're going to be spending hundreds of millions of dollars using this delivery method. Thank you, gentlemen, for all of your work in this. And now the moment you've all been waiting for. Dr. Bregge. The floor is yours. Does, I'm sorry, before, Don and Jeff, do you guys need to cut out? Or you're sticking around? I just, okay. Thank you.
We just need a couple of minutes to transfer over the presentation.
Just on that last question. How, what was that, we're not going to have change orders? What was that terminology called?
GMAX. Guaranteed Maximum Price. It's also under the lease-leaseback model. Is the other, the other name? Because you need people that can actually pull it off.
I want to thank everybody for being here this morning into the afternoon and also for the parents that were speaking. We will try to answer those questions in our presentation and incorporate that information. Mr. Seaman and I will take you through this presentation, and it will be available on our website right after the board meeting. Today, we are going to talk a little bit about goals for our school district, the planning process that's been involved, and how we're moving forward, the opportunities that this presents. And also with a recommendation. We're going to speak to you a little bit about the reinvesting of some of our finances and savings back into our program to enhance and to improve. And then also just the implementation and timeline. So our district goals are varied. And you can see that they are in areas of everything from finance to social-emotional and also academic achievement. Certainly strengthening our opportunities is what's most important for our students. Our job as a cabinet, as former teachers and principals, is to provide a recommendation to the Board of Education that is focused on improving teaching and learning in the school district. We will talk about, in our presentation this morning, about safety and student engagement, how this is beneficial for students and also for staff, and how this impacts the budget, the infrastructure in our schools, and also the community partnership that we have, which we cherish very, very much, and ways to actually improve the partnership that we have in the community. So the planning process has been ongoing. In fact, I didn't put on this particular slide, but for those people that have been in the district for a long time, you can go back even a decade to looking at consolidation and reconfiguration. It's been something that the district has been looking at for quite some time. And it's tough. And it's challenging. And that's why it hasn't been solved. And I think that we're in some great alignment today in what's happening currently in 2018. And we'd like to talk to you a little bit about that. But just going back recently, back to the Future Focused Schools Team, because that was mentioned. That was a community group that we put together from an application process. And that, that team spent a lot of time working together to look at the information in the district from academic achievement to operations as well. It's been an ongoing analysis. When we presented in January and February, and there was no decision at that time, the instruction was to the cabinet to provide answers to questions that they had been accumulating from either in public comments or from the board and from just people in the community. Also, the, what's different this time also is the, as we were just talking about, the Measure BH passing and how that plays a role as well to where we are today. So there's so many options that were studied from, this is from the Future Focused Schools Team and when the cabinet were meeting. We really looked at every different possibility. There are so many that, and if you look at school districts around us, many have a very traditional approach. But we looked at just about everything possible as far as what would be beneficial to our students and our staff and our community. So those are things, options that we've looked at. And this is just an interesting slide. I want to talk to you a little bit about the uniqueness of having four TK8. And this is not to be negative against the model. It's just, it's a reality that we have. And this is one of the reasons why the district has been looking at reconfiguration for so long. And this slide will, will share with you that if you look at our current class size range, so it's kindergarten through eighth grade. And its range, so that means that there are some sections. I'll just pick, just if you look at kindergarten. There are some sections, there is a section in our district that is at 11 students for kindergarten, while one of our schools, which could be a mile away, is at 18. And so that's how you read that, that data. So in seventh grade, we have a class for eight students. We also have then classes of 33. So we're far, way below what should be for a classroom. And then we're actually above for some of our middle school. And that's because we have an interesting way of how we schedule and the number of staff that we have at our schools. So as a former teacher, while we may look at eight and think that eight is ideal, I can tell you from a teacher perspective that eight in no way is a collaborative type of classroom. And it really restricts the amount of flexibility that you have when you're grouping students. So there's a high number of uneven class sizes in the district, which then it makes our operating costs higher and just the inconsistency and ineffectiveness to our education overall when you have this type of variance with our, with our class sizes. So the current reality, and many of you know this, because I've actually talked to some of you on the phone about classes and availability, is that we have so many schedule constraints. There is not any interdisciplinary teaming that's happening. And so to, to look at our curriculum and to start looking at taking subjects and teachers working together to share on a thematic unit so that students get a better understanding of our outcomes, we just don't have the structure available in our schools. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that. The singleton sections. Oftentimes, there has to be a choice, because we just don't have the number of students in our classes. And so I use just like an honors math. Like that is, that's just one example of where, you know, we have so many students that have to choose between perhaps band or going into honors math. And then we're also limited because of our class sizes. So the staffing structure, and this is really an important part of this slide that I would like for people to understand, that the structure that we have drives the scheduling. And what should happen is our student need should be driving our scheduling. And the opposite is happening. And so we're actually trying to force students into places where we can fit them instead of what is the actual need of the student. That should be what's driving us. So going back to January and February, there was no decision. And I'm sure many of you remember that. The, the work that we were doing, what was difficult was there was a missing piece. So we, we had numbers. We had finances. We had our current facilities. And we had the need to improve our, our education, the quality. Those pieces were all there, and we had very robust conversations. What we weren't sure about was the construction piece. And a lot of that is coming from DSA and the release of the architectural drawings. And so we had a very difficult time looking out, because it's, projects have been delayed so often because drawings are not released. It was really difficult to tell where we were going to be in the future. So what's happened between now and January, February, is that we've had ongoing conversations with DSA and really good conversations about when new construction can be starting with the, the passage of Measure BH. So now we have kind of that missing piece, is what does our future look like as far as it relates to construction? Confidently, I can tell you that we have the right plan in front of us. We have, this is the right time in our school district. And I believe that we have the right people at the table with our teachers and our administrators and our people working in facilities and construction. So our recommendation, which we will go into, usually this is at the end, but I want people to see what our recommendation is and then see some of the support behind it. So I actually put our recommendation in the middle instead of waiting to the end. And many of you already know this. But our recommendation is built on facilities and then also a reconfiguration consolidation. So our recommendation is to move the entire El Rodeo School Community, kindergarten through fifth grade for next school year, to Hawthorne. And moving the entire Beverly Vista School Community, grades TK through 5, to Horace Mann. And then moving the entire El Rodeo, Hawthorne, Horace Mann School Communities, so students and their, their peers, grades 6 through 8, to Beverly Vista. What's in this front row is a question that came up a lot back in January and February. And that was, how are you going to make it work? Does it, does it fit? So we actually did some master schedule planning to ensure that we had more than enough classroom space and also some of the unstructured spaces as well, like cafeterias, PE play areas, things like that. And that's what's in this front row. And we'll leave this out for you to view. So many benefits to students that we're going to talk to you a little bit about right now. With the newer facilities, the Horace Mann is completed. Hawthorne will be getting some enhancements. That's not modernization, but it should be enhancements. The middle school students, they are going to have more exposure and more access, equal access to our academic and elective courses. And we'll talk to you a little bit more about that. The teacher collaboration and professional development piece is a very strong piece. And it's something that has been very inconsistent in the school district. And the counseling and support services. We've actually been able to increase. And we want to maintain and improve the social-emotional experiences in our schools. we want to maintain and improve the social emotional experiences in our schools with our counselors. The community unification is just bringing all of our students together, and this is an opportunity to keep students with their friends and their peers through this transition. Smoother transition to the high school as well. Students do need a transition at this age to then transition onto high school. Some of the improvements for elementary, there, when we put some of that staff together, we won't have as wide of a range as I showed you in that other slide with some of our part-time staff that have to just fill in. It's very difficult for us to find a teacher that can come in and teach like two classes. So we have a lot of part-time, we have a lot of teachers coming in just fulfilling, not a full-time position. There will be flexible learning spaces for our schools. We have room for that. Greater number of classrooms at each grade level. And so that, sometimes going from having two sections of a, like second grade, that we are going to have more, more teachers at one grade level to offer different choices. And there's, oftentimes, we have very limited choices for some people when it comes to a particular grade because there's either one or two teachers in that grade level. The flexible grouping is another way, when you have more teachers in a school at that same grade level, the flexibility in able to group your students is really important for the type of offerings that you have. I'll talk about the collaboration piece at the middle school as well. There is incredible opportunity when you have more than just one other teaching partner, if you will. And when you have like five second grade teachers or five sixth grade teachers that can work together, it is a completely different experience when you're a teacher to have that type of teaching partner opportunity than if there's just one other person in that grade level. Reducing the number of singleton sections, as I talked about, that's always problematic because what happens is that is when our students need to make choices. And the wider continuum of learners is that we have an opportunity to meet varied levels of our students. And this last statement goes back to what I said about the schedule driving the instruction. When you have more students at the grade levels, this is what begins to flip that model where you have the student need, whether it's academic or social emotional, and we meet that need instead of the other way around. At the middle school level, on the left-hand side is tenants of middle school philosophy, which is something that we need to talk further about. We need to provide some training because it's different than the way that, what's being delivered now. So for example, on the left-hand side, these are tenants of middle school philosophy. In the purple in the middle, it's whether this is possible under our current system having four middle schools in our school district. And then the middle school combination would be the consolidated middle school. So the interdisciplinary teaming, which I'm going to talk about in just a few minutes, it isn't possible. Our teachers now, some of them, many of them are teaching sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And they're just all over the building, different preps, different classes, just to fill a schedule. The options for our curriculum and our classes, it's limited. In fact, many cases, we're trying to find if a teacher has, doesn't have a full schedule, we actually are trying to just find something that they can teach, just to fill it up. The extracurricular options, we have very limited extracurricular options at this time. And with a consolidated middle school, having that critical mass, the sports programs, all of those things that we should be providing our students before they get to high school are possible. And you can see on there, again, the teacher collaboration and the concentration of resources to best meet our students' needs. Just, you know, the research part, I said this before, it's, you know, research is important. It really is. But if you're looking for one thing, you could sit and go back and forth with trying to find any piece of research to challenge another piece of research. But I will tell you, these are very good publications. This, the book on the left, this is by the Association of Middle Level Educators. So there's 27 of the foremost educators at the middle school level have provided, it's kind of a meta-analysis of work from 27 people, and it is an excellent publication to have. People refer to it all the time at the middle school level. And then also there's another book that's Turning Points 2000. These are just some of the things from This We Believe, and as I mentioned, we'll make sure this is on the website. But this is such a critical time, the adolescent time. And I heard somebody say that, that was speaking. And it is really important that we meet the social emotional needs. So when I hear, you know, people being worried about putting all sixth graders in one spot, there is a benefit to having all of your sixth graders in one place. And we'll talk a little bit about that, too. So just a couple of things from This We Believe, which is that book, about the research, about the practices that are happening, not only in middle school, but TK all the way through 12. And it's the academic growth, it's the support that impacts the grades that students are moving from elementary to middle to high school for their success. The personal development piece is a critical piece that's been missing in some of our schools. And there's a way to do that through this structure. Also, the book is just great to just pull things out of that I know will, many will resonate with you. The problem solving, the ability to do that when you're with a number of teachers and students at a particular grade level, it really does provide the developmental readiness for our students and in the interests of our young students. Some of the things in that philosophy, and we'll provide more information for you as we continue to learn and get educated about middle school philosophy, some of the things I've already mentioned about the teaming piece, robust curricular options, the grouping of students is really important. And not only the grouping of students if they're in an honors class, it's having this fluid growth experience for our students. So somebody may not be ready for an honors class, but they might be in October. And so right now, we have very little on-ramps. And so it's kind of an unintended tracking because we find a spot for a student and very seldom are you ever able, if a teacher notices that somebody is excelling, to then move them out of that setting into a more differentiated experience. So it provides that opportunity as well. And I've talked a little bit about the teacher collaboration and professional learning opportunities. So this is an important part about middle school philosophy, probably the most important part. Because of our, the age of being an adolescent, and as a former middle school teacher, it is a unique age. And you have to love it to teach it. And I'm sure as parents, you feel the same way about how difficult it can be. Somebody can be crying one minute and the next, you know, they're all excited and they're laughing, they're all over the place. To meet those needs, there is a, similar to the high school, but much different, to having houses and having this core team of teachers. And if you've, you know, heard anything that I'm talking about, this is the most important part. This is not happening in our school district. And when you look at, and I'm going to show you this diagram here because I think this is the best example. So it may not look like this as far as the classrooms because they may be all in a line, but it's putting our students and our teachers on a team. So it's about 150 students, it's not exact, but you have different grade level teams. So there would be two different grade levels, teams at each grade. And you can see that there is the same teacher. And so the same set of teachers, and this is just an example, whether it's English, math, science, social studies, they are all in that pod. It may be in a line, but it could be in that area. They have the same group of students. So it's taking a larger school experience and making it a smaller school experience. And there are so many important characteristics to this. Because as I mentioned, many teachers now, they teach sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, these teachers work together. And these teachers truly know their students. They share the same students. And so if there's a teacher that's having difficulty or having success with one student, they're all right there next to each other, and they all can share strategies about what are you doing? I'm having a problem with somebody. Or I just noticed that this particular student was, something wasn't right today. And they can work together. And it's that period of time as an adolescent that that support is so necessary. I remember as a teacher, middle school teacher, there was a death in a student's family. And so we were able to keep our eye on them. And that was, you know, same thing at sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade.
Wait a second, I have to interrupt. As a parent in this district, I pray to God you do that currently.
So here's an example of a, about what I was talking about with the houses. So this is, this is just an example of like how we can work with our teachers. So if you look at, this is just an example, but the teachers, like in the core area, all have the same common planning time. And they do this for a couple of reasons. This is where they can plan their curriculum together. This is where they can work together. This is where they can either talk about students and student success, student opportunities, or they can also be working together to talk about their curriculum interdisciplinary teaching. And Mr. Seaman.
Good afternoon, Board of Education. I'm excited to be able to kind of jump into the what, the how, and then how much. And so what I'd like to do is draw your attention to, we've been talking a lot about why the consolidation and will it only impact the middle school student? And what I hope to show over the next couple of slides is that it actually impacts our TK through 12th grade student. We have been almost hyper-focused in this community about only talking about by consolidating, it's only affecting the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade student. But in all reality, by consolidating, you'll see how net neutrally we could utilize what we're currently spending in this community to enhance our TK5 and our high school curriculum. What I do want to draw your attention to, though, is the robust educational offerings that this is what our middle school could look like, in addition to what we currently already offer. And what we have done here is broken this up into six categories. And I'm going to get into the weeds with some of these in a couple of slides in the future, but I want to address the academic portion. A lot of my current meetings now is around differentiation within the classroom. I hear a lot from the community that my student is bored. That's purely based off of, right now, we offer two layers in math and English. We offer a regular layer and an honors layer. It doesn't pique the interest of the top 1% in the class because you're differentiating for anywhere between eight to 29 students into a single honors algebra course. By being able to work with the consolidation and gain some of those FTEs back, meaning full-time teacher allocations, we can start to create an accelerated honors course. We can start to pull that high school curriculum down into the middle school, meaning why do we have to wait till eighth grade to teach algebra? We have students that are ready in seventh grade, and there are even some students that are ready in sixth grade. And we can be able to pull because we don't have eight kids sitting in our algebra honors any longer because we're pulling those kids from all four buildings. We could offer geometry as an eighth grade class, which then you ask, will make the high school rewrite their whole math curriculum. We would have to then add additional layers into that junior and senior year because we are pulling that curriculum down into that seventh and eighth grade level. The same thing with English as well. We offer a regular and an honors. And through the suggestion of our cabinet, we would be able to offer an accelerated course. I also wanted to draw your attention to the science and social studies. Right now, we offer one level. We have students that leave eighth grade currently and go into the high school and then are up against for the first time an honors level course in both social studies and in science. We did not prepare them for that in the current sixth, seventh, and eighth grade model that we offer because we do not have an honors level course in social studies and science. By being able to reallocate some of our FTE, we would be able to create those honors levels, which then would allow us to prepare our students in seventh and eighth grade prior to when that grade would impact them, their ninth grade year, and that transcript is, you cannot rewrite, once the grade is on there and if they get a C in an honors course, because it's not their fault that they didn't have that opportunity in seventh and eighth grade. I'm going to talk about STEM and just the reallocation of the current funding that we actually put into it. And how can that extend not only from the TK8 all the way up into the high school? The creative arts, you'll see that there are varied levels now of art. We currently run, except for at one location, art. We run basically a foundational course in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We can't separate that. And for those that have artist students, you'll know that there is a difference between a 2D art student who likes to sketch and a 3D art student who actually wants to build. And those pathways are separate. And it would be great to be able to provide those fine art students those opportunities. And even in the performing arts, you'll see just having more robust opportunities in band, orchestra, in concert choir, but bringing in theater and drama. By hosting at Beverly Vista, the middle school, we know that we have a theater that can host the drama theater program. We also have enough space to be able to implement a dance program that would align with our fine arts. We would have a full fine arts wing that even from a dollar-making perspective, we might be able to rename and bring some revenue into that program. But we've also discussed in previous, just around the athletics program, we currently do not compete with our surrounding districts in intercollegial athletics because we would be sponsoring four teams. And frankly, that's finding four coaches for each of the programs in addition to funding, equipment, referees, and all that stuff, we would have to multiply by four. And then last but not least, on the top is the leadership piece. A lot of the questions around, outside of the academics and the electives, what are the value adds of consolidating into a single middle school? And that is being able to offer an ASB course, bringing in some of possibly the career technology education pathways. Currently, right now, we're running a structure where we're offering the career pathways after school. This would provide us an opportunity to be able to bring them into school. Instead of hiring four additional staff, we would bring high school staff into the middle school. And then web, around the transition piece, we currently right now run the web program at two locations, Horace Mann and Hawthorne. It's in its second year of implementation at Hawthorne and its first year of implementation at Horace Mann. That's going to help us work on the transition from fifth grade into that sixth grade school, into that middle school environment. It is the little sister or our little brother of the link program, which we currently run at the high school. So what I want to do...
Before we leave that slide, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Before we get back to it. So just the two things that jumped into my head are, as far as designing an accelerated math and English curriculum, is that something that we can do by next fall? Because that's designing a new course.
The nice part is, is we would actually be extending the high school curriculum, which is already created, implemented, and we know is effective and efficient. We would be bringing them down, which would provide me four years' opportunity to be able to create that 12th grade. By the time these eighth graders got to 12th grade, we would have to design on the back end. So we would have four years out before that curriculum would have to be data-proven and established.
Okay. And then as far as this whole picture here, can we implement all of these next year? Do we have space for all of these? Do we have space for all of these?
Correct. Yes.
That's because we didn't have a middle school choir, I guess.
I know. All right. Yes. And so in the next couple of slides, what I, I'm going to do is be able to walk you through, where's the cost? Where are these people coming from?
Okay.
Right? Where's the cost? And then, from the implementation standpoint, I'm going to walk us actually through each of the buildings as well. Oh, sorry, guys. So the reinvestment and the savings portion, even though dollars does not and should not drive instruction, I think it's important to understand what we're currently spending our dollars on, and what is, what is the outcome of that spending? I think there are times in this community where we have placed things on the books to say that we offer the program, but it is not comprehensive and it's not robust enough for an outcome of a true pathway into high school, or a true opportunity to write about on a college application process. And so I want to dive into some of those a little bit. When you'd asked, Noah, about just where's this coming from, and kind of how are we going to be able to do it? On the next couple of slides, I want to show you, I'm going to utilize math as an example. Currently, right now, we employ nine full-time, the FTE stands for full-time teachers. To consolidate into one middle school, we would need 6.4 full-time teachers. My ask at that point would be that .6 reinvestment, so it's not a total savings reinvestment into the program, which would provide us an accelerated math level at sixth, at seventh, and at eighth. When you look at that accelerated in both ELA and math, we're talking your top 1% to 2% of those students in the current algebra course that is sitting there not challenged. By doing that and opening up the accelerated class, it now allows us to run a true honors program and find some of the regular students, quote unquote, and, and help push, create open access into our honors program to allow students to move from maybe regular in sixth and seventh grade, and push them a little bit with the proper wraparound services, then show them that they can actually achieve honors level work. But right now, if we push them up too fast, too far, they're still stuck in there with that 1% that is pushing the teacher to move quick. And by separating them, we can push a little bit, some of our regular up, some of our honors even higher, and then have an accelerated course, both in ELA and math. And you'll see the same structure. We have nine FTE in English, 6.4 would, would be the need to run our current program. And then I would ask for that reinvestment again of the .6. The total savings would be $240,000 if we were to utilize the 120 per staff member. So you would see that we would save on both sides in being able to offer additional levels. I'm going to jump into the social studies and science I had mentioned earlier, where we have currently eight full-time teachers in social studies. We would be moving to 6.4 full-time teachers. We would ask that we reinvest 1.2 of those FTE, because we would want to create an honors level course and based off our current numbers in math and ELA, because it's a reading and a computation issue in both science and in social studies. I would ask, or we would ask that we'd offer two honors in sixth, two honors in seventh, and two honors in eighth. Your total savings would be $48,000 in social studies with our current staffing, but in science, we would have $96,000 in total savings. Here's some of the net neutral, and this is one of the things that I think is very important as a taxpayer, is when you look at what we're currently funding and operating, if you look at STEM itself, we have 3.8 staff members that fulfill our current STEM middle school curriculum. We would need 3.2 to run the exact same current program that we have. That being said, if we reinvest .6 of that back in and left at net neutral, we would then be able to offer two sections of engineering at high school, and our staff are qualified and actually interested in teaching those, an intro to engineering and a principles of engineering course through Project Lead the Way, while also implementing the middle school robotics program that many people in the district have asked for, where it would actually be an isolated course during the day, and we can actually go out and compete with those that also offer that as a middle school course. Another example of net neutral is our French program. Right now, we have one FTE, we have one staff member that drives between four locations that costs us not only a full FTE, but mileage in addition, because every day driving between four locations. By moving that one staff member into one middle school, we could actually create a layered French program, and the benefit is at the high school level by doing this. We would be able to create two sections of French I, two sections of French II, and a possible elective utilizing what is her expertise, or a native speaker. We have some students in our community that are native French speakers, and they wouldn't take the one-two. What that does for us is it actually increases our French program. What we currently have happening is either students are taking French I, or we don't have enough students to take the French II in each of the buildings, so the program folds and we're only offering French I. But we're still paying for her to, the staff member, to drive between the four locations, and so the students place directly into French I in the high school, where a lot of our Spanish students are placing into Spanish II, which it's the 3-4, we renamed it into 2019 to 2020, or into honor Spanish. This would increase our AP French numbers. This would also increase the opportunities at the high school within our French program. I'm going to start talking a little bit about some of that savings again, and then into the implementation. So currently, right now, we have 70 staff members in that TK V model. If you look on the left-hand side, this is the exact classrooms that we are currently running across four buildings. We have, and I'm going to use third grade as an example, we have 12 third-grade classrooms currently in service. If you move to a 2TK5, you'll notice that we are able to move down to 10. You'll also notice that we moved from 70 staff members, which we currently employ, to 54 staff members. And I rounded up in each of the categories, meaning there are room to grow in each of the grade bands. I didn't, if it, if it ended at 5.0 in the exact division, I went to six to provide us an overflow classroom. So that close, if we went to 120, you know, $120,000 per teacher, that's right there, almost $1.9 million worth of savings. But the added benefit is now you have teacher accountability by having two administrative teams reviewing what is happening in the second grade. Some of the community and even ourselves question sometimes, why in all four of the buildings is there a discrepancy in what's actually happening in third grade? What is happening in fourth grade? And I want you to think about that for a second, is so when you look in fourth grade, we have 12 independent classrooms running and delivering fourth grade curriculum. We also have four sets of an administrative staff overviewing or reviewing or observing those classrooms. And then you have the district office. What we're saying is by removing, less people reviewing the exact same thing, it's only going to create more authenticity and allow for it to be more, the continuation to be created, the equity to be created. If they're in the same hallways, the same administrative staff is reviewing them, it makes it easier for teacher accountability and collaboration. So the implementation and timeline. So the question that has been asked around, can we fit sixth through eighth grade into Beverly Vista? So I'm going to actually read through this slide, and I hate to do that, but I think this is important. To know that our class size would be 29 students in each, outside of some of the elective courses with teacher approval, such as maybe fine arts and PE. That being said, we currently have 912 students in the middle school. That is our live body count. We have 281 in sixth grade, 310 in seventh, and 321 in eighth. Now, when I say current, I mean these students, sixth grade is in fifth. We have 281 fifth graders. So I rolled it up. So when people are asking about 963 or 950 students, that is what we're currently serving in the middle school as it stands. Projected would be 912. To ser, to ensure safety and instruction for 912 students, we would need 32 instructional spaces needed per period. So per period, we would need 32 instructional spaces to ensure that 29 students in each of those 32 spaces is safe and secure. That leaves us with 18 spaces remaining in the current Beverly Vista structure. So let's jump over to the right side real fast. There are 33 core classrooms in Beverly Vista, meaning what is being currently served as science, social studies, math, English, or special education programming. And there's 17 areas for elective coursework, fine arts, technology, STEM, world language. That gives us a total of 50 instructional spaces. We need 32 just to make sure that the kids are safe, and just to make sure that we're able to instruct them. So you asked, though, from an expansion standpoint, and so if you look, there's 33 classrooms utilized, oh, sorry, 30, 30, it should be 32. All right, hold on, I'm sorry, let me jump back up to, to ensure that the math is correct. 33 classrooms utilize only five periods because I removed the electives, okay? So we have 33 core classrooms. If you times that by five in an eight-period day, we would still have 81 additional sections open to be able to offer opportunities for growth. In our current structure, our teachers and our staff are used to having their own independent space. It's not like that at the high school. Some teachers share locations. To open this up, we could do that. You'll see in the Beverly Vista floor map, there are a lot of open spaces, such as the science lab. It is us rethinking and recalibrating the way that we deliver science. Instead of holding the space hostage, like we do, where we know our students are not taking labs every single day, they might be doing labs once to twice a week. We are holding that space that could be utilized as a maker space, as a entrepreneurial lab, as a, and the list goes on, because you'll see in Beverly Vista, in the middle school model, we are able to place those teams together. So you see ELA, math, social studies, and science together. The science teacher does own their own instructional space, and then they share a lab, but also with the whole school. There are three open labs for teachers to be able to sign out per period, to be able to have a guest speaker come in and do a demonstration. That isn't science-related. It could be in their social studies class. So now you have flexible learning space for these students. I'm going to continue on to Hawthorne. Actually, I'm going to back up real quick for the Beverly Vista. One of the other conversations or questions is, right now, we have less students on Beverly Vista's campus, and yet it feels so tight. And I'm going to clump it a little with drop-off and pickup. So when we run a school with TK V students on your campus, immediately, it slows everything down. It takes parents longer to get out of the car to be able to deliver their student to the kindergarten classroom, to help them fasten their backpack on, make sure they don't forget their lunch. In addition, that is the exact same situation on the campus. When having K V students alongside sixth, eighth students, it automatically slows and closes areas and sections and teachers off to the middle school students. We sequester the middle school students currently because there are full hallways not accessible, meaning the kindergarten section. And when the kindergarten, second, third grade has access to that art teacher, the middle school does not have access to that art teacher. And so by removing the kindergarten in fifth grade, you now have more open access to the full campus for the larger students. In addition, those teachers aren't pulled between two programs. Our PE teachers, when they are teaching K through five, they cannot have a sixth grader in there. But if they're only teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we now expand the opportunities in the scheduling for them to have access, and expand flexibility in their scheduling. I may jump into Hawthorne. So for the TK V, class size, again, we are not increasing TK through third at 23 students, and fourth and fifth at 29 students. You'll see by bringing over Elrodeo into Hawthorne, and we rolled these up from current numbers, you, and you would see 67 in kinder and 67 in first. And you ask, why is that the same number? Because there's no way to project kindergarten students, right? They move into our community early. So that 67 in kindergarten is our current number, and then we rolled it up into first grade, to ensure that we have space. So we have 546 students, and you can see the breakdown. We'd have, the largest class would be that second grade with five classes. Now you ask, what benefits? We would be running the exact same current curriculum and opportunities, still have four additional classrooms that are open at Hawthorne for growth in the homeroom sector outside of the elective classrooms. The elective classrooms aren't accounted for in here if you look at the Hawthorne map. In addition to programming, from an absorption standpoint, and part of that reinvestment is offering world language as an opportunity for our students just to have exposure and not mastery. But in addition, I would also, and we would ask, that we brought in maybe a full-time science teacher to help alleviate some of the requirements on that TK V multi-subject teacher, to expand around that STEM I had mentioned about reallocating that STEM and utilizing our science spaces. Horseman as well, I'm going to go, there's 696 students when we roll up enrollment. We would have an additional three spaces open for growth outside of the elective classrooms, and we would still be, in addition to our current programming, adding the world language and the science. I'm going to hand this back from a transition and a cultural standpoint.
So, one thing that even back January, February, the Future Focus Schools Team and the cabinet knew what was important to, for any plan, is to have, to focus on the implementation. Already, I was at, just earlier this week, at an Elrodeo marathon PTA meeting. And it was amazing, the ideas that I received from parents about how to help in this transition. So that transition is important to us, and it was important to the Future Focus Schools Team as well. So we would be looking to have a transition team with parents and also students, administrators, and also teachers to help consider what are the most important things that we need to do as we begin to transition students. We've begun to look at the traffic management, as Mr. Seaman just mentioned, there, there are many access points at the Beverly Vista campus. And so we're working with the police department, we've already started conversations with them. We're going to have a full traffic study, because there's options. We haven't made any decisions as far as, you know, yes, we will have staggered times, no, we won't. We want to make sure that we have that data, but we know that, that with the police department, with some extra assistance and some guidance, that there's a better way of pooling traffic in and getting traffic out. Also, there's a large number of students that would be increased that could walk or ride their bike to school. Just next steps is, there's a lot of operational things that we have to look at, there's a lot of conversations that we have to have. It's important, we want to be very sensitive as well to staff that will be not with us anymore due to the reduction of, of staff. It was, it was questioned, and so I want to make sure that I, I fully answer that we want to work closely with our unions, because the layoff process is a very complicated process. It's driven by the collective bargaining agreement, it's in the union contract, and so it's, it's complicated in that not only are you looking at seniority, but you're also looking at what the teacher is credentialed in. And there's also then bumping rights. And we have teachers that are, many of them are credentialed in more than one area, and so it's, it's truly a process that you have to go person by person. And so it's just important for you to know that that is, we're sensitive to that. We know that each year, that I've been Um, we know that each year that I've been here, we've been offering incentives for, uh, people getting close to retire because if people are going to be, uh, or are interested in retirement, um, that's another way to keep some of the, uh, our newer teachers. Um, and those types of things, from an HR perspective, we want to make sure that, um, we're able to meet all of those because we want to keep as many staff as we can that want to be here. Um, so there's a lot with, uh, course selections and just making enhancements to some of our schools, having those transition committees up starting, um, the actual movement, there's a lot of operational pieces there as well. Um, and then also the staff parent orientations. Um, we'd love to have opportunities where students can, um, uh, if this was approved, to start spending time at their new school, um, with some of the activities. PTAs coming together and giving those opportunities before the school year actually starts. So just a quick timeline, just to give you an idea, that, um, the recommendation would be that the, uh, we establish those committees if this was approved right away so that we could start those, those teams working. Um, Elrodeo would, the students and staff would finish this school year out. There would not be any disruption to this, this school year. And at June 1st or shortly thereafter, um, the, the school would then go offline, and then all of the construction teams would be ready to, to start that building, um, and finish that building within about 20 months to 24 months. Um, we, there's some improvements that we have to do at Beverly Vista with some of the restroom modifications. These are, um, uh, improvements that we would need to do from moving some of the smaller students out. So a lot of that's just in their plumbing and restroom areas. In 2018, so in June, beginning would start for the new Elrodeo, that construction would start. And then the plan is in June of 2020, that when Elrodeo is finished, that students will move back into Elrodeo, into that beautiful new building.
That's 2021.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, at this, we, we've not determined what that, what that will be as far as, it, it's going to be a brand-new, beautiful building, so it will be occupied by students, but that will be for a future board.
Don and, uh, Don and Jeff are freaking out over there. Elrodeo is 2021. It's two years. It starts next year.
I saw that and I didn't want to look over. But, um, but I do, I do think that the, the, the time is now. And, and I know that there's a lot of questions. We're happy to, uh, answer those questions from the Board of Education. And, um, if we don't have the answer for you today, we'll, we'll bring it back to you on Tuesday.
So, so what I would like to do is obviously have the, my colleagues opine and ask questions first. I think if, um, people in the audience can have an opportunity to send questions in or speak on, uh, Tuesday, because we'll be revisiting this on Tuesday.
Sure.
Um, I, I don't, I think that's the best way to conduct the rest of this presentation since this is for discussion purposes only. We are not voting today. Okay, colleagues. Not yet.
I want to, I would really like to address, uh, comments to those here in the audience who are skeptical about this, recommended, do some good things, or those who are more than skeptical, opposed, or feel that it's, it's, it's a rush rush and shouldn't be rushed. I really would like to speak with you. I don't know whether everybody realizes this, I hope they do, but currently and over the past several years, the academic performance of our district falls far below the performance of like-sized neighboring districts.
Thank you.
And if anybody doubts that, please contact me. I can give you, I can give you the information. It's in black and white. Down? Well, I don't know what you mean by down, but it's true. And I, I can show you in black and white. So I, I guess you're disagreeing with what I'm saying. It's also known that some, some unknown percentage of Beverly Hills children
Set off.
who attend private schools, their families have them in private schools because, because they want them to get a better level of education. I served, as some of you know, I served on the school board for nine years throughout the 1970s. It was a different district then. It was a different time, it was a different district. Uh, one of the big differences was we had many more students enrolled. I think there were about 2,600 students in our high school. We now have about 1,400. In middle school, a huge, huge difference. We did, we, at that time, we had the critical mass of middle school students in school. And I can tell you, I was there at the time. I can tell you that there were no significant differences between the classroom experience in one school or one classroom and other classrooms. There was no significant difference. It was such a high level, and Beverly Hills Unified School District was known as one of the three finest public school districts in the country. It was known as a life-size school district. Three years ago, I, I was elected to the school board again three years ago, and my concern and my goal, one of my concerns and goals was to improve the academic program. Shortly after I was seated on this board three years ago, the superintendent at that time, Superintendent Tesler, and, um, the CEO, Per Carter, told me in a meeting, the only way that we can improve our academic, our, our, our educational program is to convert to one middle school. And they explained, not in the kind of detail that you heard today, but they, they explained the same problem. And it goes like, somebody said, this has been discussing this district for 12, 15 years, the need for it. What I want to say, in as meaningful a way as possible is this. Well, let me, let me just add another thing. Our high school students were polled during the time of the Future Focus team study, and almost 80% of our high school students said, recommended one middle school, one middle school, that they would have, that these students knew that they would have been better prepared for high school. You have to listen to the, you have to listen to these students. They, they know, they went through it. I want to tell you that, I'll put it this way, my heart breaks for all of the students that we have underserved, that we are currently underserving. My heart breaks for them. And one of those students is my own grandson. He's in the eighth grade. And fortunately for him, one of his parents is a teacher and the other one was a teacher, and he's getting a lot of homeschooling. But to say, well, let's just do the best we can and keep the K system and do the best we can. We're underserving our students. That's not what we're here for. So, um, I hope, you know, you'll never, you'll never please everybody, never, never in a million years, you'll never please everybody. But I, what you have heard today in this presentation is, is the votes are nuts. Now, some people said, well, how, how are you going to fit it into, um, into, into Beverly Vista that wasn't built to be a middle school? And we on the board pose those kinds of questions to staff, and staff has, staff has pointed out in black and white where the rooms are, everything. How, how it can be done? And it can be done right? And the good news is that the staff we have now is competent and able to do this. So I, I'm just going to close by saying this to you who, who have doubts and who don't want it. Think about the benefits for our students. That's what matters. That's what matters. And the sooner we do it, the fewer students will be underserved. Thank you.
So I just want to circle back to some of the questions that we had asked, and I guess I have a question for other, either Jeff or Don. I guess the question was asked at the last meeting from the board or the study session having to do with facilities, uh, you know, the question had to be asked about Elrodeo. Can Elrodeo be looked at as a possibility for being the, if we were looking conceptually at a middle school, could it be that middle school permanently, given the constraints that we have with DSA? And, you know, if we were to alter the, modify the plans for it to be a middle school in a long-term basis, would we still have that school offline for two years or where are you at with that? I think that was a question posed because we have to ask that question. And I think that, um, Jac- Jackie had it, I, I know your last name, sorry. I know that she had, um, asked that question as well. And so that question was asked at the last, um, study session. So you were going to come back, I think, and give us the information. I'm not sure if you're ready to give that answer, if not today, maybe Tuesday, but I wanted to circle back to that.
We, we also discussed the same question at the Elrodeo PTA meeting, and, and the gentleman did address it.
Well, I wasn't, so I think it's a perfect question.
Right.
So I'm glad it was discussed, but you can provide the same answer. Thank you.
I think Kevin did a good job of responding to that as well. The facility itself, when it's completed in terms of its features and its capabilities from the facility standpoint, was always intended to be a K through eight. So it has those components that you would want to see in a middle school particularly. From the standpoint, larger conversation, the question has been asked and thought through and analyzed a great deal in the last, well, I'd say the last eight months. And what's the difference between BV and Elrodeo with respect to the site specifically? Basic difference is there's more real estate that is not, that is available at, at BV. Actually, the actual acreage at Elrodeo's more. But by virtue, just simply, because the buildings are in the center of the property, they're located in the center of the property, there's not as much potential for, um, playscape and outdoor space. BV has more outdoor space and more capability. And more space if you wanted to add, um, a multipurpose room, for example. So, yes, Elrodeo could be a middle school. It's originally designed to be a K through eight, which incorporates that classroom capability.
Um, it has capability of 800, and for student-wise, it can grow. Um, but I don't think, it's much more smaller and reduced in, in footage.
Because the, the other thing that was, we looked at too, is that, uh, the drop-off capabilities at Elrodeo is not, as in, not to, to your advantage as it is at BV.
So the recommendation would be that BV be the permanent middle school?
I'm not making that recommendation.
No, I, I, I just want to be clear because we're, we're in a, we're in a position to, we're taking off Elrodeo offline.
Yes.
And so the idea for doing that is, is time, and so that we can do, we can go in there and do all the buildings that are coming out from DSA. So my question is, I guess, we asked the question, you, you, you remember the question, Dr. Brady.
I do.
And I remember FFST also asked the question. Where would the best middle school option be at? Would it be BV or Elrodeo long-term?
From a facilities perspective, we've recommended, since the first day I came, the first day that, uh, Mr. Palmer came and we walked all the sites, BV was clearly the best choice from a facilities and from a utilization of outdoor space, um, available to you.
I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta let my colleagues opine first on this.
So if you all have questions, I'm happy. You, you can email me your questions, and I will ask those to staff over the weekend so that we can get those in, answered in their presentation and delivery on Tuesday. I can do that, and, and I'm going to try, is that, is that fair? Because, you know, we have a form. So, so I'm going, I have some questions, and hopefully I'll get to that. Yes, let's talk about, we talked a little bit, just, I just want to circle back first to Mr. Seaman and your presentation. Um, I have, I have a question again, this goes back to Jackie's question, K5. So you talked about how for language, arts, or, say, we would do some introduction, I'm sorry, what was it? Not leadership. I think it was language, some language beginning, just wondering, why don't we do, why don't we do immersion? Or I know it's probably too soon to go into it next year, but wouldn't the objective be that we develop language more fully, such as, I think, um, I think Culver City has a more developed immersion program that begins in the very, very early ages for the students so that when they do transition to middle school, they, they have a very, very good fundamental basis to really achieve and, and, and acquire the, the language. And I'm talking about Spanish in this instance, I think we do Spanish at the high school, French, and we still do Hebrew?
Yep.
So, I mean, I'm just trying to see how we can articulate those programs down to the, uh, to K5. How early can we start? Have you even looked at that? And I know that this was, you're saying, if we were ready to go next year, this is what we can achieve. So how do you envision that at some point in the next two years, three years, or haven't? Or you haven't? I know that this is like...
No, absolutely. So, so this is something that we have continually looked at as an immersion program, and also identifying the TK5s as, um, you can even go with like an academy model. So one of the things that we've done is we visited the Italian immersion program in Pasadena just to see how that they run their current structure. Um, the thing about it is exactly, Ms. Hackers, this is what we, I, we all feel comfortable and, and don't feel like we'd lose sleep that we could promise to deliver and ensure quality instruction by fall of 2019. For a true immersion program, we would have to find the right staff, which would take us quite some time to look at some teacher prep programs, in addition, the right curriculum to ensure that it would stay through. Maybe fall of 2020, you know, would probably be the soonest that we could actually, if this was a direction from the Board of Education, uh, determining on what language we would want to stand behind. You know, I believe that we as a cabinet can confidently say that we could kick that off by fall of 2020 at one of the TK5 schools.
But also, and I can just elaborate, that it's important that, to remember, this is, you know, these aren't new dollars. These are, you know, reinvesting. And so I think that, um, as, as we become more efficient, um, we need to start looking at things like adding more music classes into our elementary with band and orchestra.
Okay. Uh, finally, Mr. Seaman, I was just going to make a recommendation that perhaps you kind of touched on it a little bit. You talked about bringing down the math program to, uh, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and really beginning to build on the program that we currently have. But I think it'd be important to also explain to the community how Beverly Hills, the math program, we are not really, I guess, competitive in the, in our, in our, in our... program, we are not really, I guess, competitive in the, in our, in our, in our, the way we track, and the, and the, our track system right now is, it doesn't, not everyone will have the opportunity to wind up at calculus, even the honors students, they have to double up. And so that's a disadvantage to students who are on that track. And so, um, those students are taking two math classes at some point in their career at the high school, unlike math students in another high school who are just taking one year. And so that does have an impact in their GPA and their performance because it is substantial. I mean, the, the workload that they have to do to achieve and to get to calculus. And so we used to have a period in this district when that track was fully developed. But I think it's important to, you know, I, I'd like to have, I think Santa Monica's ahead of us, I think Malibu, well, Santa Monica, Malibu is, I think Pasadena. And so if you could come and give us some data, because I think that is really important for parents to understand, that even if you think your child is in the honors program, you really are a year behind from everyone around us. And that, that is, I think, I've heard this, um, for the last few years, that this is really, it's difficult, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a fair, um, setup for our students who are on any track, whether it's regular math or even the honors.
If, if you may.
Sure.
Um, we have spent a lot of time this year already just focusing on our math curriculum, uh, whether trying to find a partnership through UCLA or utilizing a Daniel Moore, who's a consultant in the community that's a former UCLA professor around like cognitive guided instruction. Um, one of the things that is evident here is due to the fact of staffing in four K eights, and this is the reality, is we have two staff members on each campus, and pure numbers alone allows them, and, and students alone allows them to teach one section of honors math. And there is one entry point from fifth to sixth grade currently, except for those students that give possibly up their summer to take the bridge program. So we don't track necessarily, which is, you know, illegal. We do have some access, um, but it isn't as open for all students, meaning that regular ed student that is performing better, that's a hard worker, that truly could be a great honor student. One, at one campus, if the class, the honors class is full, they're not recommended, so they stay in the regular. At another campus, if it's, the numbers are super small, like eight, they might be pushed up, you know? And so that's another accessibility issue as well, based off the number of campuses that we're currently running.
Okay. I guess, and finally, um, for Hawthorne, I just a question, the, I think Noah, you kind of pointed next steps, you had it in there, I can't find that page online.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll just piggyback your question here. Um, you use the term, it was on slide thirty-seven, you use the term modernization to Hawthorne and Beverly Vista. Um, modernization is the wrong word, I believe, I think refurbishment maybe, or improvements?
Yeah.
Enhancements? Okay, just so we can maybe add some detail in exactly what we're looking at in, in that?
Yep.
Um, so people understand, it's, these are minor projects that will have a major impact.
So let me, and then finally, one more question regarding facilities. Um, so you talked about staggering times where we would have drop-offs, or, um, do you think that we could get like a, when, if you were to develop a time for drop-off, ideally at BV, when do you think the community can start to see that so they can understand what you're all envisioning, so that we don't create an area of traffic and whatnot? And also along those lines, I would imagine that you'd have more staffing, parking at BV. Uh, we have limited space there, or have we figured that out? Or what are your plans for that? I hope that kind of answers your question.
Just from, from, uh, one of the things, uh, Dr. Bregge had alluded to, is we are in conversations with, uh, Beverly Hills PD around just the traffic study itself. But one of the things that we currently do on all of our campuses right now is we have one access point or one entry point into the campuses based off security, which is important. To run a full middle school, the nice part is, is there are going to probably a, a larger influx of maybe students that are walking, because they are sixth through eighth grade. You, you kind of eliminate on that time of that TK five parent that has to get out of the car to remove the student from, and then give, but, um, opening up three act, entry or access points into Beverly Vista. So there's one behind the school, one on front of the school, and an additional one by the playground, that gives three opportunities for parents to drop off at three different locations versus a single ten, which that's part of that backup. Um, and so that's one of the things that we're definitely exploring, that, to help alleviate that issue.
As well as the, we'll do a full traffic study because we do want to have that data. Um, we, our police department is amazing, as we often, uh, recognize them, and so they've been so great to, you know, engage us in some conversation, but we want more than that. We want some of that data, and that's not a decision that we want to make lightly because that, there, there is an impact to, to our families. Um, but there's also options too, that i- if there was a staggered stop time, there, many schools at the middle school level are creating, um, this flex time, a place to go for students. So if it is in a drop-off for, um, our sixth grade, uh, or our seventh grade, and an eighth grader so that they wouldn't have to come at another time, they, they could still come at that same time, there's just a certain place that they go. Sometimes clubs meet at a certain time for eighth grade during that time, so there's a lot of flexibility.
And I guess my final question was having to do with staff. You know, how do you envision the parking at BV to be utilized by an increased number of staff if we were to go to a middle school there? So I, I'm not sure.
I could take that one.
Okay, go ahead Noah.
Um, you're going to have, uh, the same number of staff, or actually less, because you have, uh, more students per classroom, per teacher. You still are, are teaching in almost all your classrooms at BV, so it, it doesn't affect the parking at all. And I don't know if you'd have the same number of instructional aides or not, I don't know what those numbers would be, so those numbers might affect, um, the overall in, in a sense that it would decrease it, um, because you obviously have more students per classrooms. So that's, that's my summation of the parking. Did I get it right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's my aide. I just also want, while I'm speaking, um, I didn't know if you were finished.
I, I just want to reiterate a little bit of, um, comments made by Mr. Spitz. I think also one of the pieces that I didn't hear Mr. Spitz, um, touch on was that teachers really, um, if you speak to them individually, they are very much for a middle school. A lot of them have said that to me over the years, and, um, I think they know. And, um, you know, we're, I don't think we're going to do, I mean, I'm asking the staff, I mean, y- you know, the question is, can this be pulled off by the end of the, by the beginning of next year? Because that's the responsible question to ask as a board member. And, and if you tell me yes, and I believe in your ability to do this, and I believe in the ability of the principals, I think that the answer is what it is. But I, I, I want to know, do you really, I mean, I think you've said you can pull this off.
Absolutely. I mean, this, this is the right time.
And we're not, I'm not interested in doing something that would be, you know, irresponsible for any child, um, in the school district.
There is enough time, in fact, just with the transitions and getting some, um, some assistance, as I mentioned, the, the, the meeting that we had at El Rodeo was, that was amazing, some, some great ideas coming from some of our parents that we didn't even think of to help ease in the transition. So the, there's probably a hundred ideas like that out there. And so that allows us time to collaborate with, uh, with, with everyone, with, you know, parents, but also some of the staff, because I think that, um, you know, there's, it's, it is a change for staff, but I think that, at least the conversations I've had with staff is, is just that we ask so much of our teachers, and in teaching sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and having different lesson plans for so, that, that this, from the conversations I've had, would be so welcome to have, where you can do something and do it well, and not have, where you're so scattered.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. And so because you said the word staff, I did have one question, so thank you for reminding me. If, if, if Beverly Vista were to be the middle school, I'm, I'm assuming one principal, right now, currently we have one principal, one vice principal, do you envision that being different or the same?
So, I mean, it, with the students, I, I still believe that in our middle school, that the support of our assistant principals is, is extremely important. Um, and in my experience with that number, it, it would be appropriate to have a principal and two assistant principals. And, and I tell you why, because I, I think what I've seen in some school models is when there's one assistant principal with nine hundred students, you start to take some of your support staff, like some of your counselors, and you start, and then you, you remove them from what, you know, they should be doing.
Okay, um, Mr. Goldstein, before I go to you, I was asked to say, if anybody has questions, I think the best way to handle it is that we have a website that was developed, I mean, an email, community@bhusd.org. If you send your questions to that, and I will be so bold as to say, CC me, so I know your question's being asked. I'm happy to, at least, because then I'll make sure it's answered. Because if I don't know what's asked, I won't know if it's answered. So if you say community@bhusd.org, we can get all your questions answered and your concerns addressed before Tuesday. Um, Mr. Goldstein, the floor is yours.
Very, thank you, Ms. Margot. Uh, Mr. Spitz, just like you, I was in the district in the nineteen seventies as well. I was a student, interestingly enough, you were on the board, I was a little kid.
I may have had to do your performance.
You just may have. Um, I, I attended Beverly Vista School, so I'm very familiar, even though I did not have children that attended, my children attended Horseman and the high school. I am familiar with Beverly Vista, because I spent a lot of time in, um, Principal Puffer's office and with, uh, Ms. Stern, may she rest in peace, and a whole lot of other, Ms. Maggason, and a whole lot of other educators, uh, during that time.
And the nurses.
And the nurse, yes, well, I fell down, went boom too. Um, so I, I do know of what I speak, at least when it comes to dealing with, um, the K eight model. I was raised in the K eight model, I was educated. I like to think back then, Mr. Spitz did a very fine job, and the board, and Ken Peters, and the educators that were here. One of them was my cousin, who had been a, a social studies teacher at the high school for thirty years, so the caliber of the educators, and not to demean any educator that, that's here today. Um, but it, it was a different time, it was a different place to some degree. When you talk about education, and Mr. Margot talks about it consistently, my wife talks about it consistently, she's a, she's a master educator in LAUSD, she teaches primary grades between ordinarily K, um, well, she taught first through sixth grade, she's credentialed for K through nine. So I, I'm fortunate to have a lot of in-house, um, experience. Most of my friends are educators and administrators, and not so much here in Beverly Hills, but out, outside in LAUSD and other districts as well. So I have a, um, wealth of people that I can speak to, to get general sense, aside from our educators, our superintendent, our staff, and, at times, former board members. So, you know, I, I look at this and what we're doing, about five years ago when I got on the board, and I'm not going to, and I have a lot more to say on Tuesday, so I'll try to keep it short, although that never really happens. Um, yeah, I know. Five years ago when I got on this board, we looked at the quality of education and the delivery of education, and one of the main goals that we had as a board five years ago, and it's continued with, with Mr. Spitz and Ms. Hacker coming on the board, was the delivery method. And we talked five years ago about competing with private schools, you know, that, that was kind of the goal. Um, at a certain point, we said, gee, we just want to compete with LAUSD when it comes to facilities, because they have billions of dollars in bond money, and their facilities look pretty nice, and they attract a lot of people, it's a lot less expensive to live in some parts of LA with pretty good teachers and pretty good schools versus Beverly Hills. So what has been driving this discussion for five years, uh, first and foremost, is to try to attract and retain our student body. We talk about teachers, and we've done something about that. We've increased salaries every year I've been on this board, and now that's going to go on for about eight years out. And, you know, and that's important, it's hard to get quality educators here. We're landlocked, traffic is not easy, people don't want to come here because it's difficult to be here. Aside from what you may think of the board administration, or the community, or everything else, I think it's a great community, and we have some great teachers here. But the reality is, we need to pay better in salaries and benefits, and that's work, that's something we work very hard as a board to do. And that's, that's paid dividends, and we've seen the fruits of that labor, because the quality of educators that we have in this district are markedly, I think, more effective than we did five years ago. We work really hard, be it SERPs, or actually using some accountability methods to, um, I don't want to say push out, but actually to, to incentivize some of the educators to leave, quite frankly. And then we have some great educators that stayed a very long time, and they're phenomenal, and they're still here, and that's a good thing. So this is not just a one-piece, gee, we're, we're reconfigurating a district, we're, you know, consolidating whatever. There's been a lot of moving parts to this. The biggest issue, um, is the fact that our buildings needed to be renovated, our construction program is important to abate lead, asbestos, lead pipes, our kids need to be in a healthy, safe environment. This board has worked very hard, whether it's decommissioning oil wells, which is important, whether it's putting armed security in the face of what's going on in the nation and shootings, and the craziness now with, with people putting bombs everywhere. You know, it's a, it is a different world we live in, unfortunately. Um, we're dealing with metro, you know, we have concerns, health and safety concerns, how that's going to play out, I don't know. But I know, as a district, we're obligated to, to make sure that always stays on the front burner as a concern, to do everything we can. So we do what we can to try to advance the, the health and safety and education. It takes some time, it doesn't happen overnight. This has been a five-year plan, which is now extending out through construction, probably an eight-year plan, a few more years of construction to go. We will rival every, any private school i- i- in our region when these, this construction's done. The goal is then to rival every private school and every LA city school for education. That's the goal, our children deserve no less. So we look at many things to do this, and one of it has been reconfiguration. We've been talking about this, it wasn't, I know Dr. Bregge started in twenty seventeen, on the bright side, if you come Tuesday, you're not going to get the full speech, so. Um, we started in twenty sixteen, when Mr. Spitz and Ms. Hacker got here, we, we enlisted a, a private company called School Service to California to actually look at our educational delivery model, to look at the efficiencies, to look at the finances. That started in twenty sixteen, before this gentleman was even a, a twinkle in our eye. Okay, so we've been taking this seriously as a board before Dr. Bregge got here. How it ends, you know, I don't know, that will come most likely on Tuesday. From the standpoint of us preparing and planning, a lot of people say, it's so rushed, it's so rushed. Well, we've been looking at this, when, when comments are made for ten years, yeah, periodically they look at it, but they didn't do the in-depth data dive that we did with School Service to California. We went ahead and hired them. They interviewed dozens and dozens and dozens of teachers, they interviewed parents, maybe some of you were interviewed, maybe you weren't, they interviewed board members, staff. They then put a report together that was published and made, uh, public in, I think it was February of twenty seventeen, when Dr. Bregge got here. That was the first, those budget, um, educational delivery meetings that we had when Dr. Bregge just got here, primarily to get Dr. Bregge up to speed and give him some foundation for something to look at. We didn't stop there. There were demographic trends in there, we knew demographics, that declining enrollment was driving this discussion, because they're driving the discussion from the standpoint, because we don't have critical mass and enough students, we have small class sizes, and because we're spread too thin and our resources are too thin, and a lot of things happened. In the nineteen nineties, after Prop thirteen i- in the seventies, by nineteen eighty-five, by nineteen nineties, the money ran out. This district was supported by great people in the PTAs and the BHF. We were able to kind of prop up, and the great thing happened is we got a great, a lot of really cool programming for our kids i- in the late nineties, two thousand to two thousand and ten. I did a lot of it, many of you are sitting here when we did it at Horseman, and El Rodeo, and Hawthorne, and BV. We did a lot as parents, and we put a lot of resources, but it was haphazard, it was like, well, we want to do debate over here, and maybe a horticulture club here, and they do theater, musical theater over there, and these guys are really great on STEM over there. It wasn't a unified school district anymore. Yes, kids were getting what their parents wanted them to get, but they weren't getting exposure to what everyone in the district had an opportunity to. And then people would say, well, I want to transfer there because I want my kid to do that, I want this. That should never happen in a unified school district, especially when you, at that time, had four primary sites. It just wasn't equitable, it's something that many PTA parents sitting here fought very hard. And I know Rose Keisman's not here now, before that, it was Jen Terrell, and Suzie Roberts, and we had Monique Gibbons. We working all the way back for two decades, trying to equalize the opportunities in this district. As parents, we can only do so much, as a board member, I can do a little bit more, at least I got, I got twenty percent say in it. Um, and input, we need to make sure this is a unified school district. Everybody talks about it, but what does it mean? Well, you've seen examples of what it means here. I'm not going to go into, um, dissecting this, because quite frankly, we just got this today. And as a trustee, I'm going to say, and I did speak to Dr. Bregge yesterday, it concerns me as a trustee to know that something that's this dramatic in the move, not that we haven't seen components, everything that's in here, I want you to know, you know, we've been giving paperwork. We deal, a lot of this, what we're doing is personnel, okay? Because it affects the personnel, it affects where the kids are going, it affects peoples, it affects people's jobs, it affects our students' abilities... it affects people's jobs, it affects our students' ability to be educated. So a lot of what we do is enclosed. Yeah, I know. We talk transparently. There's certain things that legally we just can't do in the open. This is something we can do. When we, when we believe one way or the other that we're ready to present, we present, and then we take input and comments. And we hear from you. We hear in the emails, we get calls. The board has, over the weeks and months, heard from you. So I know it's a little frustrating for you to sit here today and you're not getting your questions answered. As Mr. Margot had indicated, bring your questions is important. I wanted to talk about, I wanted to, I think I'm gonna tell you what my questions were to Dr. Bregge and staff, because I think it's important, and it may generate some further questions. What I love hearing from people, it's not, you know, when you come, and if you come and yell at us, or just talk to us, or just give us, hey, did you think about this? It's important, because to some degree, we're in a bubble. Some of my colleagues have primary school kids, some don't. We start to get detached from what's going on. I knew everything when I was a PTA president on the BHEF and the COC. I heard from everyone I knew, I was in, I was boots on the ground. I'm not there anymore. It's one of the reasons I didn't run again, okay? Because I'm disconnected, and I'm not honest about that. I'm starting to get to the point that I'm getting a little disconnected. That's not a good place for a board member to be. And I'm being honest about that. It was one of the primary reasons I didn't. But I do still have a say, and I have a vote until December 5th, and I'm going to utilize it. I do wanna go through the questions I asked Dr. Bregge and staff. Please evaluate the overall impact of grade configuration on academic achievement, specifically comparing a dedicated 6'8" middle school versus a 3K-8 schools. And for these, I have received responses back, but I want you to understand the questions I asked. Please evaluate whether entering a middle school in grade six versus grade seven has any negative effect on short and long-term achievement. There's been discussions after the FFST, gee, some private schools go K-6, and then they pick up and go 712. Is that a model we should look at? Well, you know what? Down in the future, maybe one day, yes. Please evaluate whether there's a difference in reading growth for students from fifth to eighth grade in a K-8 school versus those in traditional 6'8" middle schools. Please evaluate whether there's a difference in math growth for students from fifth to eighth grade in a K-8 school versus those in a traditional 6'8" middle school. Please evaluate whether moving to a middle school causes a drop in student test scores relative to that. We are in an active school. Relevant to that are students who remain in K-8 schools, the first year in which the transition takes place, because there is a drop-off, and that needs to be addressed. Please evaluate if a dedicated middle school student's score, if the scores drop off, whether those students can catch up with those that remain in a K-8 environment once all of them have entered high school. So can they catch up? Seven, I only have a few more of these. Is the reading achievement growth of students in fifth to sixth grade different when the transition to middle school is within a K-8 school versus when the transition is from an elementary to a traditional 6'8" middle school? Is the science achievement growth...
That's the door that does that, but thank you.
Is the science achievement growth of students from fifth to sixth grade different when the transition to middle school is within a K-8 versus when the transition is from an elementary to traditional K-8 middle school? Is there a difference in reading growth for students from fifth to eighth grade in a K-8 school versus those in a traditional 6'8" middle school? I only have a few more. Is there a difference in math growth for students from fifth to eighth grade in a K-8 school versus those in a traditional 6'8" middle school? And is the reading achievement growth of students in fifth to sixth grade different from when transitioning to middle school is within a K-8 model versus transitioning to a traditional 6'8"? And the last one is the math achievement growth of students from fifth to sixth grade when the transition to middle school is a K-8 versus when the transition is from elementary to 6'8" middle school. So I've given a lot of thought to whatever we're gonna do on reconfiguration. I wanted to know these answers, because that's not, it's not that it's important to me, it's important to your kids. My kids are through this, they're at the high, my last one's in the high school.
Are your answers gonna be published on a webinar?
Yeah, I know. And Mr. Seaman, and Dr. Bregge, and I don't know if you wanna take time now, or if you want to publish some of these, or how you wanna answer them. But these are the questions I asked. I got answers to them. I want to now see how those answers fit into what I see here. I, you know, again, I just got, I would have liked as trustee to have this a week or two ago. We have seen components of this. Am I gonna lie to you? We've seen periodic components of where this was going. Just a couple technical questions, because if BV is going to be a dedicated middle school, you know, I understand the kindergarten rooms, those have to be redone. Mr. Blake or Mr. Pileman, or, and I guess Mr. Seaman, what uses would those rooms have? What would they be converted to? And they're too small for big kids to be in there, so what are we doing with them?
The actual bathrooms for the kindergarten, they would actually become storage, so they wouldn't actually be an adjustment. We wouldn't actually have to worry about plumbing. It would be actually filling those, because they'd become fine art storage for the orchestra equipment, the instrumental music, choir, dance, mats. We'd wanna use those. That's why that's a good fine art swing, is that additional storage that those bathrooms create.
Yeah, because I see you had it written down, I didn't know if you were putting orchestra, extra, you know, choir. So it'll be stored for those programs. Okay, what's gonna happen with the playground that's for the kindergarten?
So the playground in the left front of the building would just be removed at that point, and it would, it would serve purely as an opportunity for outdoor ed space until, you know, if we decided, you know, in future years to put a multipurpose room or a gym. Being a former athlete, I'd love a gym, just FYI, people. I'm just kidding.
Well, that's okay. That actually brings me to my next question. PE, it's like the only mandated thing we actually have to do around here, oddly enough, which is good. Health is important, getting the kids running around, health and fitness. So inclement weather, I mean, I know you got the pit, as we call it at BV, or I don't know what you call it these days, but the pit inside, you can't run kids in there, it's too disruptive. What are you gonna do with them in inclement weather? Or when, in inclement, around here, it's either three weeks of El Nino or four years of sunshine, and it gets really hot. So what are we doing about that? Do we have...
And so if you look, by offering a dance program, one, it's gonna start to, I mean, if we look at our current structure at the high school, we run six full sections of dance, and we are actually, like, not admitting students. So through the audition process, just because there are so many students that wanna be a part of the program. We are making assumptions, when I state this, that that would be similar in the dance program in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which they would have an indoor facility. In addition, we have the multipurpose room, which is labeled PE, so there would be an instructional space for the PE teachers. And we would not run more than two sections of physical education at each period for eight periods straight. So if we use the pit for one instructional space, and then the multipurpose room, all three programs could be inside for inclin...
Yeah, that's kind of my concern. If you're going to use the pit, it's very loud, and we're dealing with metro and noise vibration. Kids make a lot of noise. So if you got two PE classes or a PE class, do we have any other options that we're looking at, let's say externally under, I know, you know, down the road, they talk about, well, maybe you build it out and build an actual building, but that takes too long. Right now, that's not in the immediate future.
Mr. Goldstein, without sounding flippant, I would say for the rare times that you do have inclement weather, you can do yoga. There are actually real possibilities, and I don't mean, I hope that doesn't come off wrong.
Like, I know at Horseman, they've put in this really cool-looking purple shade structure. Is there going to be something like that at BV planned?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think I've taken enough of everyone's time. I look forward to comparing my responses to what's here, and talking further and asking more questions to you over the next, you're gonna have a busy weekend.
So I will just say briefly, because I'll save my comments for most of them for next week, on the, I do encourage people to come look at these if you haven't already, because one of the questions we asked is how are you going to fit everything? This is how you're gonna fit everything. And it fits nicely, and there's room to grow. So people should take a look at that. The other thing is, on the Horseman, you have, on the first floor, you have second grade and fifth grade, and then on the upstairs, you have third and fourth. Is, was that, I'm just gonna say, shouldn't second and third be downstairs, and fourth and fifth be up?
What we tried to do is create wings. So you still have kind of that early elementary wing on the left-hand side of the building. So if you look at it as a top to bottom, so they're using, second, first and second are using one stairwell, fifth and fourth are using a different, so we're kinda even starting to separate the big from the little in those as well.
Okay, that's fine. I was, I just had to ask that. When I, when I joined the board, if people wanna go back and look at the posted minutes and agendas, you will see one of my parking lot items, Dr. Goldbrook at the time had something called a parking lot, where board members would put basically new business, things we wanted to discuss. Back then, I had, for months and months and months, until I finally gave up, dedicated teachers for dedicated subjects at middle school. It's in writing, it's on, it's posted on those agendas. It's taken, I don't know, maybe six years to get to the point where that could become a reality. Seems that this is, be the pathway to make that happen at this point. The other questions I've always asked is, with the numbers that we have in this district, we are just running an inefficient district, okay? That's just period. It's a, it's a, in so many ways, we are inefficient as a district with, educationally, financially, it's, and that needs to change. We are not going to change as a district at all, and when I mean change, I mean grow for the better, unless we change the way we deliver. Now, we finally got wise with our construction delivery methods, and we said, hey, this design bid build doesn't work anymore. It cost us way too much money and changed orders, it took too much time, it created a lot of problems. So along comes Mr. Blake and his team, and says, well, I think I have a better way we can deliver this, and I think it'll, it'll work. So it's working so far, because we started, we started a few, a couple of months ago at the high school. So the program is actually underway. Same thing applies to education now. What we're doing, our delivery method of education to our students, is not working. It's, there's, there's been no significant growth, in fact, there's decline in test scores. Usually by this time also, we kind of have summaries about our test scores. We didn't even talk about that yet this year. How did we do last year in our state testing? Well, I'm, I'll tell you this, if we did fabulously, we would've talked about it. So I pretty much can guess what happened. Little bit went up, mostly stayed the same, lot went down. That's, that's what we, that's what happens. Mr. Seaman, if I'm wrong, you can correct me. But, okay. So we have an opportunity to look at this. Eight months ago, when we brought this to the board, I grilled Dr. Bregge, and I said, here are my, I'm not gonna go through my questions, everybody, but I had pages of questions that I sent in to get answered, and I believe everything has been answered, except for the pickup and drop-off is still a little bit ethereal, it's being worked out, but I, but I understand what you presented today, and I'm glad that you're speaking with the police department about that. But this has been an exhaustive process, at least for the members of the board. There was a time in July where I asked Dr. Bregge for one of these floor plans of Beverly Vista, and I took it home, and I got lists from, from Ms. Chisholm about our enrollment, and I bothered staff, and I went by myself and programmed a middle school to see, hey, does this really work? Are we, are we blowing smoke? What's going on? And I needed to prove it to myself. And then when it started to all pencil out, okay, I didn't program it exactly how, how Dr. Bregge did, but that's not my area of expertise, I realized, okay, maybe this, maybe we can do this. And not just get away with it, not just make it happen. It's gotta be better than that. It's gotta be excellent. It's gotta be, it'll, the experience come August 12th next year, and I keep saying that as if that's the first day of school in my head, and I think it is, but it could be the 13th better. Kids have to be noticeably, oh my God, this is terrific. Look at where, this is, what an amazing thing we've done. And I wanna end with this thought. This is not easy. People are upset that we are not blind to that. We understand this will affect almost every family in the district. And even if you say, well, it doesn't affect the middle school students at BV, you better believe it will, because they're gonna be in a different environment too. So I can, I can say, this will affect every student, every family in the district. This is not going after a particular campus. We are not doing this because we think, oh, well, you know, let's, let's punish them and move them. No, 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 no. This is an opportunity for us to set the ship right in, in every other aspect, because we've done it now with construction, and now we have to do it in the rest of the district. And we have to stop talking about it. We just have to do it. So with that, colleagues, we need to vote on the AB 1200. It was part of an item that we did not get to because it wasn't separated out in the agenda.